Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. I am going to call our regular board meeting for the Ingrid School District to order. In person, I have myself, President Elisa Vekalas and Member Hildy. On Zoom, I have Board Members Holloman, Board Member Donley, Board Member Mitchell, and Board Member Bellamy. And when I see Board Member Marsette, I will call her in as well. With me also, I have Dr. Dina Bishop here in person, as well as an assortment of administrative staff. We have a quorum. We are good to go. Board Member Hildy, would you please do our flag salute today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda, and I will entertain a motion at this time. Member Hildy?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Member Mitchell, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I wanted to offer an amendment or a motion to amend the agenda.
Go ahead.
I'd like to offer to amend the agenda to remove items. Let me pull it up. Sorry, got the wrong screen. Screen over. On the action items, I would like to move that we move items five and six to the action, to be action items for the December 15th meeting, so that we can have the option.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Member Mitchell, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think there's a lot of discussion that the board members, there seem to be a lot of questions, and now that it feels like we have a little bit of breathing room on this, so by being able to discuss this in our Communications Committee, we'll be able to be in a better position, I think, for the next meeting to have something that most members feel comfortable with.
And so Board Members know, I have already spoken with the Chair of the Communications Committee, and she has agreed to add on the time and extend on next Tuesday's meeting. And so the purpose is to have discussion there and then bring it forward to the December 15th action item. Member Marsette, you had your hand raised.
I'm not in favor of that. So are we going to take a vote on that? And I can speak to why I'm not in favor of it.
We will be taking a vote if you wanted to speak.
Okay. I believe that we had this on the agenda last school board meeting, and I would like to move forward with this. This is one of the reasons, even though it's an action item, it's still open for discussion, and I believe that we could still vote on it this evening instead of moving it off to Communications.
And Member Hildy, you had your hand raised.
I'm fine with it because I think the amendment process will get bogged down, and I think we can get a better product if we do it in a work session. I agree with Member Marsette on the timeliness being, I mean, that is why I brought my motion. But I'm very pleased with the board's response to the urgency of, you know, talking about this, so I'm okay with it.
And Member Bellamy, you had your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. I guess I want a clarification. I'm for it. I just need a clarification. So the motion is to move both items. The motion is to amend by removing both number five and six from the agenda. And bringing both back or bringing one back? What are we, are we just bringing back the report?
So it is removing action items five and six. That's the memo 062, as well as the resolution, and then it will go to Communications Committee. And both may come back. Only one might come back. That, you know, we'll kind of see how that goes. I know there was talk of removing 062, but that is up to the maker of the motion and the process, maybe through committee.
And I think formally, what I really should have done is moved to remove them from the agenda tonight.
I can modify that. That was just going to be procedurally, it's just to remove it from the agenda, but the discussion is to bring something, one or both, or whatever comes out of your communications meeting, come back with something.
Member Mitchell, did you want to amend or modify your motion to just say, remove items five and six?
Yes, I think that makes sense. Do I need to rephrase that, or Katie, do you have that?
She's got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Marsette, you had your hand raised.
Yes, I don't understand why we can't have the discussion tonight. It's been on the agenda, non-action, for two weeks prior to last meeting, and now two weeks prior to this meeting. And if something comes out of that discussion that refers it to communication, then that would be one thing. But we have a very light agenda tonight, and I believe that we should move forward in discussing this. And if we, if after the board discusses it, and the recommendation is to move it to Communications, that's fine, but I'd like to have the discussion.
All of you listen, because I know some of you are going to say... And I'm going to go ahead and just speak as an individual member at this point. Memo 062 was on the agenda last time as a non-action item. However, the resolution was not, and this will be the first time it was going straight to action. I know that several board members have amendments in different ways. Some are the same, some are different. But it, seeing what all was getting ready to compound into an amendment frenzy of a discussion was one of the reasons I would support it going to committee first before coming here, just to make sure it's a well-dialed-in document before it hits action. But that's me speaking, is me. Member Marsette, and then if there are no other comments, we will go to a vote on the amendment of the agenda.
So I think this resolution is important enough. Not all board members attend the communications meeting, and I know we're working on legislative goals, which is going to be our priority. So I do feel that it still warrants discussion at this time, because it is going to be a topic that will be discussed. And I believe that now we have the time for it, and we shouldn't belabor this by moving it to Communications without first having the discussion.
All right. Not seeing any other hands in the queue. We have a motion to amend the agenda. Katie, if you will please do a roll call vote.
President Vekalas?
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
He's reacting emotionally. No.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
No.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
That motion passes with five yays and two nays. We now have an amended agenda. It will do one more roll call vote unless there are any other amendments being offered. Seeing done, Katie, if we can get a final roll call vote on the final approval.
Yes, let me just get the original motion up here. Member Mitchell?
Yes.
President Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
No.
Yes. My mic was off, sorry.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
And the final amended agenda passes with six yays and one nay.
Madam President?
Yes. Member Donley?
I am unable to log into Board Docs, so I'll be voting by signals tonight.
We are going to do all roll call votes this time, so that is an okay thing. We'll be, and we can work on that. Next up in our agenda is the military report. However, I don't see the Colonel online or in person, so we will reach out to him and extend an invitation to our next meeting. And so, board conference and committee reports. I'll give each chair an opportunity to speak. Member Hildy, for governance.
Governance has a meeting next Tuesday at 3:30. One thing of note at our meeting that we're going to be deciding whether to recommend a new policy saying to do a school boundary reassessment every 10 years, starting in 2023. So that's a pretty significant thing to, you know, be talking about. So just want to be real clear on that. And so we'll be discussing that at our next board meeting this coming Tuesday, 3:30. And then you would, if we move it forward, it would be on the board meeting following that as a non-action item.
Thank you. Member Bellamy with Communications Committee.
Yes, thank you. We have not met since our last meeting, but we will meet next week on the 8th. And our agenda will consist of the amendment that took place tonight, as well as our legislative priorities. And that meeting will be an extended meeting from 4:30 to 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. And Member Marsette, Chair of Finance?
Last Finance Committee, we were introduced to pro forma, talked about budget. Next Finance Committee is the, I think it's, whenever the next board meeting is, 15th or 17th, unless it gets changed as per discussion earlier about having more work sessions, we could possibly be moving the Finance Committee. But the discussion will be budget.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is community outreach. Did any board members have any community conversations or council meeting conversations that they would like to share at this time? Member Hildy?
We did the board training for people interested in serving on the school board. It was me and Member Mitchell and Member President Vekalas were there, just saying what is a goal, what is a smart goal, what should you expect to see for monitoring of that. Really, you know, broad set of people participating, so that was good to see. Got some good feedback. One guy suggested, you know, like a website where you put all the ways, people, you know, webpage where you can see all the ways to get involved in the school district. So I thought that was a really great idea to come out of it. And some of the feedback, people wanted training on like how to file for school board, which I think is not quite what we're thinking about. But Member Mitchell had an idea of just, you know, kind of like hot topics, just to get accurate numbers out or things like that. But I think, I don't know what the next step will be or who wants to think about that.
Thank you. Member Mitchell?
Yeah, I actually had wanted to just thank Member Hildy for organizing that, and it was great to see so many people in the community there and concerned and interested. And Member Hildy, I'm happy to talk to you about maybe trying to follow up a little bit.
Thank you. And just a reminder to those that are here or listening in, next week on December 9th is our Town Hall meeting for our strategic plan, goals, and guardrails, and encourage folks to attend, or ASDK12.org/feedback is a way you can go out and go see what is out there and also provide feedback online to us as well. And so hoping that as many people as possible will, you know, share their thoughts on that. Not seeing any other hands. Before I move on to the goal monitoring, and just for those that are also listening in, we did move the ASD memorandum 062 and the resolution off of our action items. And so those that might be calling in for public testimony for those action items are not going to be there. And so I just wanted to make sure folks that were just chiming in would hear that. Next up is our goal monitoring and our graduation data, I believe is our topic. And at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And I am happy to present the four-year graduation rate. Before we move on, I just want to provide some context about these data and what we're looking at. So in defining a four-year grad rate, it occurs as a student enters ninth grade. So rather than just a count of 12th graders, the graduation rate metric begins when a student enters ninth grade or actually has ninth grade or high school curriculum or credits posted to their transcript. So just a side note, our advanced kids in middle school, we hold off on posting those so that they actually get a true four years. So they're assigned a cohort year, and that year is expected, that will be the start of their four-year graduation rate and their path from a freshman to the next four years in high school. The four-year cohort graduation rate is both a federal and a state standard for measuring. It takes into account any students that may have dropped out, been held back, graduated early, or transferred between or among ASD schools. The four-year cohort rate emphasizes accountability by not just looking at seniors, but again, looking at ninth graders moving forward. What's important to focus on is the relative rates of graduation among our student groups. We do have inequitable outcomes of our students, and I want to note that in regard to ethnicity, our Alaska Native American Indian student group has, falls at the lowest rates, and students with disabilities as a student group also does the same. And so those are some of the groups that we work with in providing equity of access as well as instruction. So taking a look at the first graph, we do have five years of data. And if you take a look, the graph is by, increases by 1% each year, so that we could really define the differences. And if you, the 2019-2020 grad rate is FY2020, which was last spring. And of course, the seniors finished, actually, all high school kids finished online. And part of that, we are actually not, we were worried with this number, but as you know, Dr. Johnson and others organized an extended school year for all students in high school. We had a very robust summer school. We invested a lot of CARES money into that. Our partnership with United Way and Back on Track, I think they accounted for 247 kids that they assisted us in getting through that were enrolled. But we had over 4,000 students enrolled in summer school, and I believe a good portion of them were, at least 25% of them, upwards of that, were seniors that we assisted, either in just the extension of the grade or actually going into summer school. So if we take a look, we did drop by two, almost two and a half percent. But last year's was still, this year's, well, last year's grad rate reported this year in October, this school year anyway, is still the second highest reported in history of ASD. So we were proud, even though we wanted to see that 84 increase. It did not, but given the circumstances, we are really proud of what kids and families and teachers did at the end of last year. But then we need to look and see, well, who are the kids in these, who make up these data? And we're going to first look at it by the ethnicity. And over the past five years, we have increased graduation rates for all ethnicities except for the multi-ethnic student group. This group continues to change and actually grow in numbers. And it's an anomaly in council of great city schools, large school districts, large urban school districts. I, in our cohorts and my, you know, partner superintendents in those large school districts have about a 2% multi-ethnic, and our multi-ethnic really demonstrates our diversity continues to grow. So it's an unstable group in that we're always looking at the students who, and parents who register and self-report in that. So that is an area for growth. The Asian and white student groups always have consistently had the top two graduation rates each year when comparing student groups by ethnicity. Hispanic, Black, Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, and multi-ethnic student groups fluctuated over the five years, but really stayed in a cluster within those ethnicities. Again, as I said, the Alaska Native American Indian student consistently falls below, and that's that lower line that we truly have to work on in providing benefits and instruction and supports to our Alaska Native American Indian students to be able to see those same outcomes. They did have their highest score in 2018 at almost 64%. And we had really done some direct, at our high school level, some really direct services and innovative programs to support that. But this last year, you can see the slope of the lines were pretty much in relation to like the different student groups or ethnicity that perhaps had some inequitable outcomes due to our school closures. One anomaly, which we're happy to see, was our Hawaiian Pacific Islander. We continue to look into that, that as far as online, they're significant. You know, some of the anecdote things are, in some of our schools, that really run solid programs for their kids, especially for those kids involved in co-curricular activities. The end of last year would have a significant impact on sports this fall. And our Alaska Pacific Islander male students are a high percentage of participants in football. And so we don't know if that's the case, but we have to look into that. But very, very proud of that group. White, Black, and Asian fluctuated about 1% from FY19 to FY20. So that drop in the line is only about 1%. But we're going to take a look at some other student groups. Multi-ethnic, Alaska Native, and Hispanic were between 3% and 4% drop. So they doubled or even tripled the white, Black, and Asian differences. Now we're going to look at the student groups. These are just for this past year, the most recent. And here, this is where the actual scores lie and the differences among our groups for ethnicity. The same data, just with the percentage posted for that one year. We also take a look at not just ethnicity, but other student groups that we report on federally. And again, these student groups are state and federally reported through ESSA. So they are a federal requirement for receiving funds, that we report them that way. If, didn't know if the public knew that. But here are three different groups: economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and English language learners. Last year was really significant. We had, the two years prior, if you recall, we really revamped our English language learner program. Significant changes began to occur last year in the organization and the higher quality of instruction, the training of our teachers. If you recall the year before, we really hired a lot of aides that actually helped our students get through, but they weren't accessing high-quality, higher-quality instruction. We were literally just getting them through the system rather than really providing them the instruction and the high-level courses that they needed. Because again, English language learners, their very, their cognition and their abilities are high up there. They just didn't have access to the English language. So we provided through this programming, kind of just did some leadership changes, and really provided the professional development for teachers to be successful with ELL students in their general education courses. And I'm very happy about that last year. But as you can see, those two groups, the economically disadvantaged and English language learners significantly decreased from last year, or the year prior to last year, to last year's FY20 graduation rate. Again, just perhaps signifying the inequitable access to school. When school is not in session in person, different students and student groups in ASD are experiencing this at much different levels of attainment. And last year, we're happy to say that the work around and with students with disabilities and IEPs was very deliberate, very exact, because of, you know, following their IEPs, worked through the summer as well. And we had one of our highest, highest years at almost 57%, one of our highest graduation rates. We're really proud of that. It still has a significant delta among all students, which we continue to work on. And the next piece is just that four-year graduation rate by those student groups, so that you can see, again, all students, almost 82%. And while we made significant improvements over the years, we don't have equitable outcomes. And the majority of the disproportionality, you can see, are economically disadvantaged English language learners and students with disabilities. And within those groups, then fall the ethnicities as well. And so these are just different pictures of who are our kids, how are they doing? And we are especially concerned this year, and I shared just a little bit during the work session, but we already have Kirsten Johnson and her team working on figuring out second semester, because we do have some significant impacts to students' learning at the high school level. But in addition, we're going to share as well the impact of those beginning years, and that's why our push was to get K2N. And there's some research coming out now. We all know about beginning reading. It is an access skill to read later on and do well. And, you know, I'm not fearful that kids just aren't going to be able to read. That's not reality. But if they decrease in 10% or 15% in those early years, that 10%, 15% stays with them throughout their educational career. So we are looking at generational impacts from having schools closed. And that is why the face-to-face, the deliberate instruction by our teachers. And it works. We know that our teachers can get those outcomes. And so at the high school level, as well as the elementary level, they are organizing, I shared earlier, you know, around some schools that are really trying to impact students that they specifically see have a disproportionate impact from being out of school. And that concludes the four-year graduation rate, and I'm willing to discuss as needed.
In the queue, I have Member Hildy.
Thanks. I have four questions. Can I do two? Okay. So could you just identify who are students with disabilities? Is it just any kid with an IEP? Because that's a pretty broad spectrum of children. And, you know, if it's somebody with just a slight academic accommodation, that would be very different for me to see them not graduate than somebody who was maybe an intensive needs student. So that would be kind of helpful for me, I guess, in my understanding. And then on multi-ethnicity, I mean, the Alaska Native graduation rate is shocking. It's very troubling. But looking at the multi-ethnicity, how much, because I do know the district tracks, you know, you can select more than one ethnicity. So are we able to break that out to see, you know, is the majority of those kids, you know, also Alaska Native? And actually, having success, I just don't know.
Those are some great questions, and I will defer to Mike Fleckenstein for the specifics on when they choose. We can, I believe they choose up to two ethnicities in regard to when they do select dual, two or more races. CITC, a large partner of ours, does utilize for their grants, not only Alaska Native, but multi-ethnic as well in their grants, because they have evidence that a lot of the multi-ethnic are Alaska Native as well. So we can check on that. Your other question was in regard to students with disabilities. And students with significant disabilities and perhaps with more intensive needs are working towards an alternate certificate. So the students included here are students with IEPs that are actually on track to graduate and to earn a regular graduation certificate, not an alternate certificate. I, I don't know if Tarlisha Wayne is on, but we can, I will provide the board the N or the number of students with IEPs. And again, we do understand that there is a difference between the student's cognition, their ability, and their outcome. And that is how we qualify students, because their ability and their achievement don't match. And so they can qualify for an IEP to get additional services. But they do fall in everything from just a learning disability in reading or math, in organization, in behavior. Some of our students, you know, fall in other categories such as autism. So it is a multitude, but they are just really, students with IEPs that are on a graduation track are included in here, not severe disabilities on an alternate certificate. But those other questions that I couldn't answer, I'll get the Ns, as well as the multi-ethnic, how that works.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Bellamy?
Yes, thank you. I have, how many do I get to ask? Just two?
Two for now, and then you can get back in.
All right. Thank you. So my first question just has to do with... So my first question just has to do with our partnership with United Way. Do we know yet if they will continue? Are they continuing with the focus on graduation and the services and supports around graduation?
Well, we continue to have the Back on Track program, so yes.
Okay, awesome. And then my second really has to do with, and I think I heard you mention something earlier about cohorts. Does this, do we have any data that tracks students, say, from grade nine through graduation?
That is this graduation rate. These are cohorts, and your cohort starts when you are in ninth grade.
Right.
Or when you have a high school grade registered, which we try to hold up, even though students might complete a credit in seventh or eighth grade, we hold off on applying that credit till they hit ninth grade, so that they meet that cohort.
And that was, that was, okay, thank you for that. But the question actually is, do we look at the cohorts to see, you know, relative to those who graduate and those who don't graduate? Have we identified any root causes in that data? So of all the, you know, black kids who did not, who were not, did not successfully graduate in their cohort or with their cohort, do, have we done any analysis of what, of the cause of, you know, what of the group that did not? I'm really concerned about the kids who don't graduate.
Correct. And we have done that. We've done that, you know, part of our increase in graduation rate has truly been the schools studying their ninth graders and 10th graders. So we try to look at even those cohorts when they begin and get them on track by ninth and 10th grade, because we know that missing credits in ninth and 10th grade is the biggest impact on non-graduates. So if you look at a non-graduate, they would have failed a course in ninth or 10th grade, as well as had high absenteeism. So those are the two indicators that we find most in students who did not graduate. Now, the root causes of why they're absent, that's worked at individual levels at the school level. And they range from divorces in families, to students moving, students changing schools, students being homeless, multitude of different programs. And so we really add those supports to those students. But if you looked at individual characteristics of students who do not graduate in their cohort, they are making one or more Fs in ninth and 10th grade, and are chronically absent. And so that's why some of our work has been around absenteeism, as well as providing supports and additional work around younger students in the grade levels, keeping classes smaller, offering additional assistance, offering mentoring, things like that.
And of the students who, of that group that drop out or don't graduate, do we know the percentage of them who may have eventually gotten a GED? Or is that beyond us?
Well, we do track, that's a great question. We do track graduation in a five years, and we don't have those completed data that are audited. But last year, when our overall graduation rate was 84%, our five-year graduation rate was about 89. The only way that you can be in this four-year graduation rate is if you're on track in four years to graduate. So if you miss a couple of credits, and you just can't make this number, you're counted against this number, but you're counted within the five-year graduation rate. And we were very, very close to 90% in our five, you know, five-year. And, you know, sometimes life goes on with kids, and we never give up on them. And anybody with a high school diploma is going to be better than, you know, and supporting themselves and our family, better off in our world with one. And so that's why we continue to work with our students, even some students in our schools, and some of our alternative schools are really, you know, beginning their sixth year. And we can work with a student up until the semester that they turn 20, by state law. We'll collect, you know, funds for them. But we have helped kids who are older, it's just that the school district does not receive, they can't be enrolled as a full-time student.
Okay. Next up in the queue is Member Mitchell.
Thank you. I just had a couple, well, really one question. You mentioned the amazing increase in graduation rates among the Alaska Native American Indian group through 2018. And it kind of sounded like, you talked about some innovative programs that had been implemented, and sounded like you were talking about them in the past 10s. Were those grant programs? Are they still in existence? Just curious about that.
You know, specifically speaking, I was speaking to two schools in the past that I had presented data, where they just really had a laser focus on Alaska Native, American Indian students, and those were at Bartlett and South. And in those years, their increase in just simply those two schools really moved the district as a whole. And just understanding that the two different schools have a very different student body. When South Angrich High School and Dr. Johnson was there, they looked at Alaska Native students, and I believe their count was 82. They had the same graduation rate, within 1% or 2% of Bartlett High for that same group of students. But Bartlett was serving over 400 Alaska Native students. And they really created, using their own data and their teachers, and, you know, their data dialogue, if you will, they explored those root causes and provided programs that were specifically designed to their community and their kids. And the two schools at the end of the year, we highlighted them with other principals, I also talked to them at board meetings at the time, that just that laser focus of their different programs that they operated in their schools created that change. And that jump, I would relate that jump to those two schools in those years.
And so those programs have continued, or they haven't?
I believe it's just everyday work, where they roll up their sleeves, and it wasn't a set, like, off-the-wall program. They were just intervention techniques that they used, and I believe that they continue to go on. But when other, when something else becomes just as important, then sometimes you slide, and we can relate that back to the goals. And I think the goals of the school district speak to the same, that we will absolutely, you know, when you keep a laser focus on what an outcome that you want to have, it can sustain itself over time.
Thank you.
Next up in the queue, Member Hildy.
Thank you. The first one is on the Pacific Islander high school graduation rates. I think it's fabulous. Anytime a kid graduates, it's a great thing to celebrate. But we've seen the discrepancy for test scores even this year, they continue to struggle the most. So I don't know how to reconcile those two. Say, maybe in the optimistic sense, you know, the community places a high value on graduation rates, and you get the kids over the finish line. Or maybe they get funneled into not as challenging coursework. I mean, if we're seeing academic scores that are some of the lowest in our district, and then to see a rise in graduation rates, we don't know how to reconcile those two. Certainly, it's a good thing to graduate, but I don't, I want to make sure they're, you know, getting the knowledge they need to be successful in life.
Absolutely. And we can take a look at that. And I know that last spring is when, you know, we really took a look at that population, because their actual grades were improved last spring, and we were like, wow. And then the graduation rate shows up in it too. And so, you know, Dr. Johnson is, you know, works with them, and really, it's engaging back with the community about what works. And what we found this summer, again, when we looked into it, just with, you know, minor action research with the survey to students, if you recall, what they told us was, I didn't have to start school till noon, and my teacher was allowed to text me, and individually communicate with me over text. And since that time, you know, Mike Fleckenstein, he has purchased, you know, a program that we can appropriately text and track texting to kids, because we wouldn't want to do that otherwise. You know, we want to ensure safety of kids, to really have that direct communication from their teachers. So we did expand that. But I believe school start times with some of our student groups, it still remains a challenge. Certainly, we wouldn't start school at noon, but somehow, if we can reconcile teenage brains and sleep patterns, and, you know, which we know from science occurs in students, in adolescents, you know, if we can reconcile that, I believe we could have additional success just in that area alone, in addition to health and safety of those students as well, because the data demonstrate that as well. But we can, we're looking at this all the time, and we'll bring this back to the principals for their, again, they do study these, they talk about them, we just haven't reported back up. And we can do that about how they feel about them. These are kind of hot off the press from the state.
Thank you. Did any other board members have any comments or questions regarding the graduation data presented tonight? Member Hildy.
I just had that fourth one. This one's just kind of more general. I heard you say that, you know, we've had the highest graduation rate, which is fabulous, but sometimes when I'm in the community, people say, oh, the glory days, it used to be so good, or maybe our test scores were better. Do we not have high graduation rates historically? Were kids testing well and not graduating at high rates? Or is it just like in recent history, these are our highest graduation rates? You might not know that off the top of your head, but...
I mean, I've been in, that's a great question. I've been in education for 31 years, and prior to No Child Left Behind, which, you know, really significantly changed how we report, you could report, you didn't break down your data into student groups. But No Child Left Behind, that name signifies a change in the federal data reporting that occurred in schools. Prior to that time, you reported an overall graduation rate. And generally, if you can see, in ASD, overall, we, you know, haven't done terribly. But when you take the last 20 years, or less than that really, you know, in regard to, I think it's 19 years, with NCOB, we've had to, you know, disaggregate the data. All data, prior to that time, were aggregates, all put together. And when you separate them, it's really keeping an eye on equity, and who are our students, and how are they doing, so that public education reaches all students. And so that's a great question. It used to be reported differently, and those federal regulations came down. And as a result, we've been looking at data differently and trying to impact students that come to us. They come to us with different skills, but our goal in public education is that dream, that that's that great equalizer, that our kids can leave us and meet the world that's out there. And so what pleases me is that the board really provided a goal that speaks to not just, I know the community's worried about graduation rate, that we're going to keep that off the ball, but if you do all those other things in college and career readiness, this is table stakes, this is going to take care of itself. And so it's the experiences that we desire for children. Because one of the things we found is that students who take a career in technical education course in a series, at least two together, have almost a 95% graduation rate. And that is really significant across all demographics. They're higher. And so if we can provide those opportunities, that's why we wrote those in. And certainly, those unwritten rules about schools that we learn, turning things in on time, it's a different way to demonstrate it, it's engaging for kids, and they learn those lifetime skills. And it doesn't take away the significance of reading and math, it just shares that whole child outlook, that when students graduate, we need productive citizens that are contributors to society and not simply consumers.
Next up in the queue, Member Bellamy.
Thank you. So I'd like to just thank Dr. Bishop and the staff for putting this together. I have been around a long time as well, and for so long, we only show, we've never broken out the data. And so to have the courage to put it out there and to show us that even though we're working hard, there's still work to be done, I do appreciate it. My question is, Dr. Bishop, if you could speak a little bit more about the generational impacts that you referenced earlier?
That's a great question. And I have just been listening to some podcasts and others from out of universities where they're studying instruction in early grades, and I'll have to get those references for you, and some reading. And we understand that the foundation of learning is in those fundamental skills of reading and math, and specifically reading, and I think the board recognized that in their reading goal, that blending of sounds and learning of sounds, and then learning of words, you know, in a way, our kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers, it is rocket science. There's a specific way to teach, that they have high expertise. And again, not going face-to-face, it's difficult. And our, you know, our parents have shared their frustrations with us, because they know that their kids are bright, but they're just not getting certain pieces. And our teachers are excellent in that manner. And what this demonstrated is that they're studying the students that left last semester, or last quarter, if you will, the last school year, as well as they haven't had the outcomes yet from this school year. But they are predicting a 10% to 15% nationwide. There's 15 million students in kindergarten, first, and second grade in our nation right now, that they are studying and watching, and they feel as though, generationally, this group, it's not about not being able to read. They are fearful that these students are not going to be able to read at the level of those that came before them, and their access of curriculum later on is going to be impeded. So they are, as a nation, and a nation of knowledge and success, and, you know, they're thinking that what's happening now is going to affect our doctors and scientists and inventors in the future, which is just phenomenal. But they're relating it back to early reading and early literacy, where students are just, are behind, 10% to 15% of what their peers have learned prior to them. And so if you think about it, there's a disparity in our different student groups. Some aren't, already are 15% behind. And so if you couple on another 15%, there's going to be some significant differences. But interestingly enough, they're relating the economy in 30 years to what's happening right now in the pandemic. It's mind-boggling, and just research. So I can capture those data, but I'm just always interested in early reading, because if you have it, doors open for you, and if you don't, you just, you have a tough time in school, which, and when you have a tough time in school, school's just not fun for you. And we certainly want school to be enjoyable for our kids.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands up in the queue, we will go ahead and move on in our agenda. Next up is public testimony. I will read a very quick statement, kind of quick. "The Board welcomes public comment on non-agenda and non-action items. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. The School Board encourages anyone wishing to provide public testimony to sign up in advance for in-person or telephonic testimony, or to email written comments by 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. These comments will become part of the meeting record. There's a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be submitted in writing. If you have signed up in advance for in-person or telephonic testimony, you will be called on in the order in which you were signed up. You will have three minutes to testify. When 30 seconds remain, a chime will ring to inform you so that you can finish your sentence. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The Board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up." And I just wanted to give a quick reminder to folks, we had several that had signed up to speak on ASD memorandum 062 as an action item. If you wish to incorporate that into your three minutes on your non-agenda and non-action items, you are certainly more than welcome to do that. I know I have a few speakers that were signed up for both, so encouraging folks to do that. First up in the queue, in person, is Sarah Price. And Sarah, you have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. I would like to thank you all for putting the safety and education of your students first by making a plan to send us all back. Unfortunately, that is not today. I have been enduring advocacy for reopening our schools for 12 weeks now, and what I have discovered breaks my heart. Depression like I have never seen before, unprecedented failure rates, the knowledge that some children are being abused in their households without anyone to intervene, discrimination from a district that prides itself on diversity, and administrative leadership that knows all this and much more, yet will not stand up for the safety and well-being of their students. Everyone has addressed the science before, but let's stress- the science before, but let's stress again, COVID does not spread in schools. And even if a student gets it, children make up only 2% of hospitalizations, so it will not add to our community situation. And what is this situation? Well, it's a district's reasoning for not sending us back. However, over the last two months, while COVID has quadrupled, the hospital capacity has only increased by 2 tenths of a percent. If there is a problem, which would mean the official state data is wrong, please direct me to the science and data. Our teachers are a crucial part of this community. They are an essential job that drives the safety and progression in a society, much like the nurses, grocery workers, and police officers, and therefore must be called upon in these difficult times to do the job we entrusted in them. And that can only occur in the classroom. I've heard it repeated from the administration down to teachers about the bits and pieces of success in virtual school. However, I thought success was not the exception, but the expectation from ASD. From North Dakota to Texas and DC to Hawaii, every state has made successful efforts to get students back into the classroom. Why can't you? As for my school, they sent our mitigation plan to this administration three weeks ago, and it has still not been approved. We do not know how many teachers or students would return. And PPE has been prioritized for elementary school classrooms. This does not seem like a school that is prepared to return. So let us not project an illusion that you are actively trying to get high school students back at the start of next semester, leaving our start for fourth quarter. But I do not have enough time to discuss the plethora of issues that would bring. There have been petitions from the community, a resolution from the students, an outcry from parents. But if you still don't believe that Anchorage wants to return, why don't you just look at the 80% of K through second students that were going to return? How can this district make goals such as attendance, attendance, performance, and safety when you are currently driving chronic absenteeism, grades are plummeting, and students are safe as in the classroom, which you have kept closed? Do not be complicit in the face of these plights. We need action now, because keeping our schools closed is not saving lives. It is ruining tens of thousands. I would also like the Board to know that there are students who wanted to testify tonight, but are stuck doing homework, are afraid their teachers would outcast them, or do not even have the energy to explain what you are doing to them. And I know there are two board members who are standing up for us. So thank you, and please keep fighting.
Thank you. Next up in person, Ethan Jennings. All right, you have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Ethan Jennings, and I am a senior in the ASD this year. My senior year has not only been a disappointment, but a complete failure of this district's ability to provide an education. Over the course of the school year thus far, I have been unable to experience any amount of a senior year I was hoping for. But I also have learned very little with the classes I have taken. This result is not because of my teacher's inability to teach, but because of the lack of courage this district possesses to send the student body back in person. Although there is a small portion of students who are excelling in online school, one would be naive to think that the students do not cheat on online assignments and that the lack, laid-back expectations of teachers do not play a role in this. Along with that, not all students are privileged with high-speed internet and dual-monitor computer screen setups. And this is because these students have less money than others, creating educational discrimination for those who are less fortunate. Is this a district of discrimination? Sixty-six years ago, Chief Justice Earl Warren stated in the unanimous Supreme Court decision with Brown versus the Pika Board of Education, that in these days, it is doubtful that any child may reasonably be expected to succeed in life if he is denied the opportunity of an education. Such an opportunity where the state has undertaken to provide it, it is a right which must be made available to all on equal terms, end quote. Everyone from the School Board to the Teachers Union has denied myself, my classmates, and education. And while students across the country are going back to school, you are deciding to play petty politics with our education, putting my fellow classmates at a further disadvantage against other students across the country. As the FDR said, "We have nothing to fear but fear itself." And this School Board, along with the teacher unions, have obviously chosen to allow fear to control the decisions they make. The failure and blatant lack of commitment by the School Board members and teacher unions to provide their students with a proper education is obvious. The idea that it's even possible to teach an entire semester's worth of curriculum in one quarter is an absolute joke. Every single court class I've taken this year has had some kind of material cut from it. And this is because we are not being allowed to go back in person. With the lack of real human interaction and constant staring at screens, I've chosen to graduate early, because the education I'm receiving is pathetic. This is not just because we are online, but because the School Board is not standing up for the well-being and education of their students. Thank you for your time, but do not expect my vote on any future school bonds, as you cannot possibly, as you cannot provide me a decent education. And I hope that you will send my fellow high school students back before the fourth quarter, like you were cowardly planning and unwilling to admit to the public.
Next up is speaker number three in person, Rachel Neenan. Neenan, thank you. And you have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Neenan, and I am a senior at Eagle River High School. I would like to address an issue that has been plaguing this school district for the past nine months. We are all aware that COVID-19 is said to be an extremely dangerous virus to all individuals. However, the CDC and John Hopkins have both stated that more than 90% of COVID deaths are due to other pre-existing conditions. Using CDC's data and basic math skills, the number of pure COVID deaths is about 15,540, which is less than half of the deaths caused by influenza in 2019. Furthermore, many COVID deaths, according to a study done also by John Hopkins, are being miscategorized, meaning that COVID-19 is not the actual cause of death. In Alaska alone, we have not had any children die of COVID-19. All in all, it is said that COVID-19 is a deadly virus, when in reality, it is less harmful than the yearly flu. Even with a vaccine, influenza deaths are drastically higher than a pure COVID death. Yet, we are forced to go to school every year during the prime times of influenza. How is it logical that in-person school is required during flu season when it's not even an option nine months into this pandemic? Is it going to be the practice every cold season to isolate children, destroy their mental health, and neglect them at quality education? Online school is a disaster, and is at such a fast pace that teachers are having to cut out multiple significant units and teach students at the bare minimum. The speed at which teachers have to teach, not by choice, is outrageous, and the district cannot expect students to retain information. Being forced to stare at a screen for hours upon hours daily is not only straining family life, but also students' health. Headaches, eye strain, irritation, and lack of patience and sleep are just a few effects of online school in my own life. Not to mention the mental health of hundreds of students within a state with one of the highest suicide rates that are at a stake, that are at stake over a virus that has not been proven to be harmful to normal, healthy individuals. We are privileged to live in Alaska because we are isolated from the lower 48. We have the ability to access what other isolated countries such as Australia and New Zealand have done to keep those that are immunocompromised and at risk safe while others are healthy to go on living their lives. ASD should offer the option for children to come to school safely. I'm certain that there are families and teachers that have their concerns, but I believe that logic and the ability to think for oneself is more important in these situations. But it's not encouraged anymore. The future of this state and country is in your hands. This Board and Superintendent have the authority and responsibility to do that. So please be decisive and put education in our future first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number four, Nava Schillinger.
Nava Schillinger.
Thank you. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nava Schillinger, and I'm a student at Eagle River High School. As you know, we're in a pandemic, a pandemic that does nothing more to kids than seem like a common cold. You have been presented with statistic after statistic, proving that allowing us students to go back to school would be better for our well-being. You have ignored our voices and ignored that you are not fulfilling your duty as our district leaders. I am a senior this year. I will be thrown out of the nest in less than six months. School is supposed to be teaching me to fly. However, right now, I feel I don't even know how to open my wings. I do not feel like my needs as a student have been met. As Sarah Price said a little while back, I'm a ticking time bomb. I don't know how to apply for scholarship, and I don't know how to find opportunities that I can contribute, that I can contribute what I want to this world. Hundreds of students feel the same as I do. We stare at a computer screen just for our Zoom lectures for over four hours a day. Along with that, we then are given assignments made up of reading and memorizing. I spend my day from the time I wake up until after eating dinner, working on such assignments. I went from staring at a computer for less than an hour a day to looking at it for the majority of the time that I'm awake. Another aspect of this quarantine is isolation. I can count how many times I've spent time with my peers, on one hand, since March. I never see people anymore. We don't see each other anymore. School isn't just learning about core subjects, but learning how to do well in social situations. School in the lower 48 carry on as usual. The schools are functioning really well considering the epidemic, wherein. There can be measures taken to prevent spread while meeting the needs of our students, and it is the responsibility of this Board and Superintendent to accomplish that. Now, there is one thing that has been staring you in the face, which has been brought up over and over again. That is our students' mental health. We are isolated, we feel alone, uncertain, scared, overwhelmed, not because of what's going on around us, which will all may contribute. No, we feel this way because of what's going on inside. There have been at least three student suicides since the beginning of quarantine. Alaska has the highest suicide rate of any state in our nation. A large number of these suicides happen to young people ages 15 to 19, which are three of the high school years. Our support groups that we built in school to help us fight these battles have crumpled. School gave us the opportunity to see and know people, to build relationships. Every one of us feels alone. We're drowning. You are holding the lifesaver but refuse to give it to us, telling us that it is best that we figure out how to swim. You have heard our voices, our struggles, our requests, and you still won't let us come back to school. Please throw us the lifesaver. Don't let us drown. Thank you for your time.
Next up is speaker number five on the telephone, Danielle Kemp. Danielle, are you with us tonight?
Yeah. Can you, can you hear me?
You sure can. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you to the Board for having me here today. My name is Danielle Kemp. I'm a retired Army Combat Officer, ASD teacher, parent of ASD students, and co-chair of the Alaska Black Caucus's Education Committee. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to item number five, which is memo 62, but also some other issues here, because all is not well in the ASD. The education system is failing our students. It's not a pre-COVID problem, though. The system was failing our babies long before now. What we need to do now is really take an equity-based approach to education, fix the root cause of the achievement gap, poorly motivated and unprepared students, not just treat the symptoms until we can just pass the buck to the next administration of the School Board. Black and brown kids falling behind academically didn't seem to be a priority before the pandemic. The actions, not words, of those who make decisions about education indicate that they didn't care, and maybe still don't. It's not that it's, it's not only now that it's made to seem like they cared. They talk a good game, but try to vote in memo 62 and push for our children to go back into school buildings, knowing this pandemic was killing people of color at a higher rate. Furthermore, we need to check some of these folks calling in peddling conspiracy theories about COVID-19 being less deadly than the flu. That rhetoric is dangerous as hell, and it needs to stop now. I also don't think this body quite understands what equity is or what it looks like. First off, equity is not equality. Equity is filling in the gaps of what is needed in order to make one whole or competitive on every level. Equity helps the whole team succeed by ensuring that all players are at full strength as opposed to equality, which hurts the team only by benefiting those privileged teammates, leaving all others to suffer and stay limited in their ability to contribute to overall team success. What would you rather have, a team where half the starters are top tier or a team with a strong roster up and down the death chart? If you take the latter, then you might understand why we must achieve and sustain equity and education. I can't count the number of times equity has been mentioned tonight. However, after reviewing the Board's Goals and Guardrails Draft, I could not find the word equity in there not one single time. That's not a good thing. As a matter of fact, it's pretty bad. Equity cannot be a byproduct of another initiative or goal. It cannot be an afterthought. Equity must be implemented purposefully and placed out front as a priority in black and white, where it should be. Where equity goes, all others should follow. Ecclesiastes 3:1 tells us that "For everything there is a season, and for a time, and a time for every purpose unto heaven." The time for excuses has passed, and the time for action is now. The Alaska Black Caucus stands ready to assist and advise the ASD on crafting an effective equity goal and supporting plan. We will reach out, but you can also contact us at any time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker number six in person, Annie Woolsey. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Awesome. I'd like to thank you all for having us, and I have a lot of things to cover, so let's get started. Obviously, as presented, the suicide rate has increased in many adolescents throughout this whole coronavirus pandemic and lockdown. I find it rather disturbing, being a victim that has had a suicide hold, have a hold on me not just once, but twice in my lifetime, which I think that you all would agree is due to many. There's the lack of food that was presented early in the coronavirus, where I believe that you all have tried to reach out for those kids who did rely on school food to survive. I was one of those kids. I'm thankful now that now I do not have that problem, but I did use to back when I was in elementary. For kids that do go to school and the worry where they may give the coronavirus to people who may be at risk or anything else, there are vaccines. As presented on the news, there's at least three being produced and ready to be served out within months. Children with abuse and the fundamental interaction between the schools, in schools, is fundamental for future relationships. I was a more isolated child in my elementary, but even then, I still find it amazing how much of an impact school actually has on children for interaction, for learning social skills. And the abuse that has increased for children is astonishing. As previously presented, the lack of sleep and everything else that has to do with staying at home is almost very nearly infuriating with how much kids need to stay up because of their arguing parents or the pain that one of their parents caused. As previously presented by one of your board members themselves, 10 to 15 million students are behind 10 to 15% on reading because of the online learning, because of how difficult it is to keep students, younger students, looking at a television screen for very nearly all day. D-Day, one in four people went running onto a beach with a full mindset that they would die. And people with smallpox, they probably cared, but they didn't take this type of approach to it. Yet, with something that has over a 90% survival rate, and we are stuck inside of our homes scared. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up on the phone, speaker number seven, Sharon Jackson. Sharon, are you with us tonight?
Yes. Yes, hi.
Hi, we can share with you. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Okay. My name is Sharon Jackson. I'm a speech language pathologist and the owner of Abracadabra Speech Therapy. I have worked for the district as an SLP for 11 years. I started out going to school at Fairview Elementary. And I also graduated from East Anchorage High. I have been, I've worked in several school districts, districts, and Anchorage School District is my favorite. I believe that the people are caring and have a heart. And my desire is to help the district. I have 23 years of experience. And there's a need, there's a serious need to reduce systemic racism and inequity problems. In the district, there are only 1% of the teachers that are African-American. And, you know, there's systemic racism in every school district. Anchorage is good, but it definitely needs to improve. I also wanted to talk about memo 62. And yes, I cheer the students, they want to go back to school, but please consider the minority students. 75% of the children dying from COVID are minorities. And I just read this article today, it was saying 75%. I've also heard 80%. Also, as an African-American female who is overweight, who has asthma, and who is African-American, I left the district early because of the COVID- and um, who is African-American, I left the district early because of uh the COVID epidemic. So I just wanted to uh address that because you will lose mi-, minority members possibly, like you lost me. Um, I am also a Black Caucus Educational Committee member, and as this group, we really do want to help improve the inequities at ASD. And some of the problems I've seen as a speech path in eleven years, I had a principal who did not want to provide an interpreter for a second language learner during a speech assessment. That is against the law. I have seen several students of color that got a lot of special ed services, but some of them, I don't think they were qualified for special, special ed. People just didn't notice or weren't around to help um to look at differences between cultures. Uh, several students of color, like I said, appeared to ha-, get special ed when they didn't need it. I saw pictures depli-, displayed, excuse me, in a school of staff members, and they only provided pictures of staff members who had educational degrees. The other staff members, the secretaries, the janitors, everybody else was ignored. It was only the teachers and the principal that were displayed in front of the school. I also saw cartoons depicting students of um
Ma'am, I'm so sorry, your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next up in person, speaker number eight, Cory Ast. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President, school board members, Dr. Bishop, thank you. Uh, I want to just do a couple of, uh, share a couple rays of sunshine and shout-outs. Uh, there was a seasoned PE teacher who dresses up every Friday in an effort to engage students while teaching math lessons online. He's just one example of many teachers uh doing their best to engage students in this environment. Counselors who are reaching out to parents and students to, to ensure students are on track. Principals who are trying hard to support their teams, parents who are trying hard to help their children engage in school. And of course, I want to recognize uh the school board members who are asking some hard questions and working to uh, to listen to everyone who's providing testimony. Uh, I'm here tonight to talk about the board guardrails. I heard your work session, uh, discussion earlier today, but feel this concern still has merit for further dialogue as it speaks directly to student learning. Uh, I asked the school board to consider a fifth guardrail or some way of uh incorporating uh in your strategic planning. This guardrail would be specific to students and help our long, long-term objectives in increasing graduation rates and the creation of lifelong learners. The guardrail is in draft form, and I know you guys can do a much better job in uh creating some better language, but it basically reads, uh, ASD will not exclude elementary students from learning science, history, civics, physical education, health, and the arts. Uh, time will be scheduled weekly to provide lessons in those context areas or content areas to all elementary students. Uh, as uh, and uh best practices in professional development in these content areas for integration will be developed. We all agree, reading is the key to student achievement. There's no doubt in every content area. You highlight this point in your strategic plan, but there may be unintended consequences as schools try to reach those data targets. Uh, we should not, although we can read, uh, learn to read specific um skill sets, it should not be done in isolation of content. Reading has two purpose, two purposes. Reading for information and reading for fun. That's it. Everything you do in reading is oriented in those two areas. Most students enjoy science, both reading and exploratory hands-on activities. Many students also enjoy learning about ancient civilizations and other historical contexts, especially when it uh dives into their own specific culture. So let's be, let's continue to be culturally responsive in those areas. There is so much more to discuss in regards to uh this fifth guardrail and why it's important. Obviously, there is just not enough time during public testimony. So I look forward to further discussions on the topic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up in person, speaker number nine, Misty Nelson. And you have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Bishop. Before I begin, I do want to acknowledge and appreciate the students who are in the room and um for your advocacy and articulation and add, you know, you're expressing needs, desires, wants, hopes, and um I think it's to be highly commended, so I wanted to start with that. Um, upon reviewing the drafted ASD goals and guardrails, I'd like to add to the previous testimony and offer some supporting evidence to the proposed student-centered guardrail that states ASD will not exclude elementary students from learning science, history, civics, physical education, health, and the arts, and that there will be time constructed for each of these on a weekly basis. In my heart of hearts, I do believe the community, families, the district, the board, and educators all desire that our students are prepared and ready to be productive members of society when they leave the Anchorage School District. We do know that there are two objectives when reading, for pleasure and/or for information. Routman quotes, "Letting students choose what they read in a classroom and schools that have excellent libraries is essential for a successful independent reading program and for turning students on to reading." Furthermore, reading competence is closely tied to the amount of time children spend reading on their own, and students read more when they can choose their reading materials. Meinhardt and colleagues suggest that increasing the amount of silent reading is the most obvious strategy for improving reading achievement. Men Fox shares, "But the idea is that reading aloud to our babies and young children will make the entire country better off." Governments now realize that by providing attention, time, and funds to promoting early literacy, less of their budgets later will need to be spent on illiteracy, crime, depression, unemployment, and welfare benefits. Finally, Gallagher addresses, "Why is the gap not closing? Maybe we should closely examine how we treat our struggling readers." It has been my experience that these students are often greeted by what Routman refers to as the poverty of low expectations, are more likely to be placed in drill-and-kill reading remediation programs, are more likely to be placed in curriculums that heavily emphasize multiple choice exams, have less access to interesting reading materials, have less access to high-interest recreational reading materials, often are not given time to read extensively, and are often taught by the least experienced teachers. And adding this fifth back guardrail of continuing to provide elementary students with a rich and well-rounded education to include science, history, civics, phys ed, health, and the arts, our students will thrive. These subjects spike curiosity in our students. They cause students to want to read more about what they're interested in. They then learn more about what they're interested in, and they create a greater potential for becoming voracious readers in alignment with goal number one. The more you read, the more things you know. The more that you learn, the more places you'll go. Thank you for considering this proposed addition to the ASD guardrails. Stay safe and be well. Thank you.
Next up in person, speaker number ten, Annie Massey. You have three minutes, the floor is yours.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here. My name is Annie Massey. I have three children in the Anchorage School District. I believe that opening schools is sound policy based on sound data, despite what local labor unions have been demanding. Now even the president of the American Federation of Teachers agrees with the experts that districts need to utilize in-person learning. Why? Because isolating children socially, placing them in front of screens for hours and removing tactile interactions with books, paper, and people was never a good idea. Isolating children in, is having unintended consequences like severe depression, anxiety, and suicide. Many experts have been united since April with the data. Data that supports opening schools. So why haven't we? The data reveals children should have returned to school in the fall, that children are not transmitters of this virus, and that teachers, like the rest of us, have a promising survival rate. Let me be clear, closing school was never about a virus, but instead a powerful union with political and social agenda that has nothing to do with the mission of this district. Most teachers, and least of all, zero to do with the proper care of our children. Keeping schools closed is going against the advice of experts and instead choosing a labor union and their chosen political party as experts. I have not given my children over to the state, and especially not to a labor union. And if we ignore sound data, we could call this, as Nancy Pelosi puts it, malfeasance and a dereliction of duty. That's what the labor unions are pushing. Please let's not do that any longer. Will this board listen, or will they put children first? Do not be strong-armed by a labor union. Do not be intimidated either. Please use wisdom and reality to influence your decision to make in-person learning a choice for every parent and teacher who agrees. Let me remind you, a labor union does not represent children, parents do. Plus, according to the AEA, they have three choices lined up for their members who wish not to work. They are covered. If our children who have not been afforded equitable, equitable choice that works for all families, it's our children, excuse me, it's our children who have not been afforded an equitable choice that works for all families. And as a parent, I ask you to, to unite with the willing educators you have hired with our youth to teach in-person once again. And don't delay. Ignore sound data. Oh, sorry. Can I close with a, a sentence?
Sure, thank you.
Ignoring sound data from experts has proven fatal for children. It's just not the virus that's causing the fatalities.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number eleven on the telephone, Allison Ariens. Allison, are you with us tonight?
I am, can you hear me?
You sure can. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. So first, I'd just like to express my gratitude for your service and for the difficult decisions you face, especially this year. I have three topics this evening. First, vaccine. It's heartening to hear that a COVID vaccine will be available in the coming months. Clearly, it's important that our healthcare and emergency workers are vaccinated first. But I agree with the district that the lack of in-person school for our elementary students is fast becoming an educational emergency. I ask that you do what you can to get our teachers, substitute teachers, and school staff vaccinated as soon as possible. I've heard that the governor will make decisions about who will receive the vaccine first. Please let us know if there's anything we can do to help convince him that vaccinating our education, our educators as soon as possible is essential to the health of our community. Two, attendance. I've heard anecdotal evidence that attendance has increased for secondary students because they are able to log into online school from almost anywhere, whether a hunting camp, staying with their grandparents in the lower forty-eight, or even just on their way home from an orthopedist appointment. The ASD data dashboard, though, only shows attendance numbers for August and September. I'll look forward to October and November numbers being shared, and I hope that they continue to rise as significantly as they did from August to September. And third, ASD virtual. You've heard me speak about the successes of online high school in the face of our high COVID numbers and how I support continuing online high school until COVID numbers are out of the TBC high-risk zone. I applaud the special programs being developed and expanded for the students who are struggling with online classes, rather than looking to send high school students back to crowded, poorly ventilated classrooms. Providing ventilation by way of open windows would be especially challenging in our climate. Let's make online learning work until we can keep our students properly socially distanced from one another or a vaccine is widely available. The option offered so far for high school students who prefer not to return to in-person high school is ASD virtual. I went back to the ASD data dashboard to check how ASD virtual stacks up against regular online high school classes. I looked at the data for percent of students with at least one F. Unfortunately, the numbers show that the percentage of falling grades has increased for all high school students district-wide, including ASD virtual. Not surprising perhaps, given the challenges of online learning. Last year, eighteen point five percent of students received a failing grade, and this year it grew to twenty-two percent. I'd like to compare that number with ASD virtual grades alone, though, and show you how well our high school teachers are doing with their own curricula. Last year, ASD virtual had an eight percent failure rate, and this year it's a shocking thirty-two percent. ASD virtual is failing our students. It's not an adequate substitute for local schools online. Let's continue supporting our teachers in their online teaching, helping our principals provide services to those students who need it most, and lobbying our governor to help them to get the vaccine where we need it most, our educators. Thanks.
Thank you. And speaker number twelve, our final speaker, Reagan Brooks. Reagan, are you with us tonight? If you can hear us, I believe it is star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
You sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I was originally signed up to something that is no longer on the agenda, but I wanted to speak anyway and just um say a few things. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for and participate in these meetings, that you all care so much about supporting young, uh, about supporting young people is um so, it's just so important, and I don't think I understood before I started testifying at these meetings, just the tremendous pressure that you're under. And um, I want to acknowledge that and thank you for doing, just working hard to do what's right. And I know I don't always agree with everything you might put out there, but just thank you so much for showing up as humans and, and recognize your humanity. I want to say thank you also to the high school students who spoke tonight. Um, though I don't share your perception of COVID-19 as no more dangerous than the flu, I do share your concerns about um mental health and other impacts on young people. And I just want to emphatically say that I think we ought, need to remember that we are all in this together in wanting schools to safely reopen and wanting um what's best for, for young people and learning. And um, this is a hard time because some of us disagree about what, what that means, but um, but I do find hope in, in that we all agree that we want what's best and, and what's most healthy for everyone. I'd also like to echo um some points that were brought up tonight about um encouraging you, the board, I'm returning to speaking to the board, encouraging you to um increase the focus on equity in your guardrails and other strategic planning documents. And I also really encourage you to try and clarify what you mean by equity. Um, as I was reading memo sixty-two, I realized like I, equity is a, a such an important term, but um sometimes we have different definitions about it. I, I found this uh quote from the Stanford Social Innovation Review that I wanted to share. They write, "Equity is one of those terms that everyone seems to understand at some visceral level, but few people share the same definition." Um, it's such an important concept, and I think it's so important that you as a board um come together, really talk about what you think it means, and then share that definition with the public. Um, and last but not least, I want to thank you for the conversation you had at the end of the last school board meeting um where you were talking about how we can ask the community to um support public health and allow our schools to reopen safely. Um, it's so important. Thank you so much for thinking about that. Um, yeah, thank you, thank you. Um, please keep encouraging our community to uh, to be safe, um, so our schools can reopen safely.
Thank you. At this time, that brings us to the end of public testimony. We always have a section on our agenda for the written public testimony that the board and uh members of the public can go out and see and read as well. Next up on the agenda is the superintendent update, and at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And I will get this going, and I uh do want to start. Uh, I have the greatest respect for the speakers tonight, specifically our students. Um, I, and I know in the past I have shared um what we are doing now. I, I continue to stand that it is a failure to our youth, and in no way does this mean that individual people are failures. I know that hit our teachers in a way that um they felt they weren't appreciated. But school as it is, you heard from young people. It, it's not a good place right now. Um, and when we talk about equity and folks are talking on the line, I shared data that there are different groups that are experiencing this differently. And significant numbers of students, um, students with disabilities, we shared, you know, students, ELL students, as well as our lower socioeconomic students, and some of our ethnicities are experiencing this uh much more than others, and this is going to impact them for their life, their lifetime. So um, I appreciate the board considering support of getting kids back face-to-face. And I'm going to share this evening. support of getting kids back face to face and I'm going to share this evening plans that staged roll in, but also until we can get everyone back, we are going to bring kids back. Teachers will zoom and then work with small groups and Mark Stock is going to share that and I look forward to the support given. Also going to share the work that's going on by our volunteers. Let's start with good things. We do have good things going on and I wanted to share my appreciation to Brandon Locke and his team of principals and teachers that participate in our immersion programs at the elementary school, but also middle and high. ASD has won a national award, very prestigious natural award, the Woodruff Award that recognizes K6 world language programs. And just as a background, in 1989, we started with just one language, Japanese immersion, since then have added the others. Very, very proud to have UPIC, it is one of the only indigenous full immersion programs in the United States, it's the first one. And so I shared last year that we had folks from Canada and other places come and visit us. A very excellent job. Hands down, just the immersion and the work around that with the gen ed teacher and the immersion teachers are phenomenal and well deserving of this national award and recognition. So thank you to the team and again, it's kind of a, all the celebrations are on Zoom, I really wish they could have traveled and received this in person because it's such a prestigious award, but we continue to celebrate them and are so proud of this program. And I'm going to ask our Health Services Director, Jen Petronas, to provide a Health Services update for the board.
Good evening, everyone. First, I just wanted to give you the most up to date CDC core indicators so you can see where we are as a community. On the first core indicators, the important thing to note is the percentage of positive cases in the 14 days has went up to 9.2%. We have been hovering around the five to eight percent, but now we're in the 9.2. We are doing a lot of testing, which includes testing in ASD. We do have the capability to do about 40 tests per day and we're really trying to make that available to staff and students that are doing face to face learning and experiencing symptoms. So that's going well in ASD. For our secondary indicators, as you can see, we're essentially in the same place that we've been for the last few weeks, especially in regards to the beds that were available. However, the big hospitals, AMC in Providence, have been seeing a huge increase in amount of absenteeism of staff due to quarantine and isolation. So even though there are beds available, there may not be staffing day to day depending on who calls in sick on any particular day. And there have been several news articles about this even today because the nurses and the staff taking care of these patients are really stressed. And then Tom's going to give a brief overview and then I'll finish up.
Thank you, Jennifer, through the board president. So what we'd like to do is to provide the school board with a very brief update on where the district stands with regards to anticipation for and involvement in the COVID-19 vaccination program that is being coordinated now by the state of Alaska as well as by the municipality. So just just so the board is aware, we have organized here over the last several weeks, Jennifer Petronas is leading the district effort to to plan our participation by way of background. There are annexes both within the municipal emergency operations plan as well as the district plan where the district is a supporter to the municipality in the point of dispersing plan. So Ms. Petronas has been leading that effort for the district. And I'm going to ask her to give a brief update to the board on some of the discussions that have occurred here in the last several weeks. So with that, Jennifer, I'm going to pass to you.
Thank you. I think the most important thing to note is that today, the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices met earlier today and they did vote that the first phase of vaccinations will be for healthcare workers and residents in long term care facilities, so that's phase 1A. Phase 1B and phase 1C have not been determined yet, although we are expecting it to be essential workers and then those in high risk categories, including those 65 and up. Both Pfizer and Moderna have submitted an emergency youth authorization to the FDA and Pfizer's meeting is scheduled for the 10th of December and pending that they get authorization, the vaccination should be rolling out soon thereafter and they're estimating about 40 million vaccines being shipped throughout the United States. Also, the phase three clinical trial information is not available yet, so there are some questions that have yet to be unanswered, but we, as soon as those roll out, I will be getting an update with everyone. And just as Tom explained, we are working with state and municipality to make sure that once the vaccine arrives in Alaska, we can be ready to vaccinate as many people as possible with, in collaboration with the municipality.
Great, thanks, thank you, Jen, and to be sure, we're prepared to answer questions after the superintendent's update.
All right, the next section is just for minds eye of the board, a brief overview of our plans for next semester. I just wanted to share that these include that no matter where our vaccine, our vaccine is and where our case counts are, that we are making an effort to provide face to face in all of our divisions. And Dr. Stock's going to just share a little bit about this, we don't have much data placed in here. It is in review with School Start Task Force with principals and all those groups. But it does share information about how we would get back in a phased approach, as well as he'll touch on how we are going to split the day between Zooms and face to face for certain groups to bring them in in small numbers. Dr. Stock?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop and through the president, to the board. As you are all keenly aware of, there's just a wide variety of opinions from everyone about how and when to return kids to school, but I think there's one thing that you can see is almost unanimous. And that is that our community and our students and even our faculties want our kids back in school. I think that's that's important to note that the question is, is what's the safest, best way to do that? So what I'm going to share with you is that there are six areas our planning teams have tried to address. And what I'm going to share with you, we believe meets these six things. One, when our staff first saw many of the plans and mitigation plans, there were two areas that they were concerned about in particular, which had to do with lunches and how lunches would be served. And also the social distancing aspect is one that we've heard a lot of testimony about. So by beginning in small groups, what we've done is addressed both of those. Through the use of what I would call a grab and go lunch, students can take and leave their tutoring sessions and go right on home with their lunches. And that would take away one of those immediate concerns until we build confidence that we can do this well. The second thing was the social distancing and by starting in small groups, we are able to reduce those social distancing issues for a number of weeks until we are able to make sure that we're mitigating and properly and building confidence. One of the things we noticed in the AEA survey that they did with teachers about their feelings about safety at the school, the highest rated schools were the schools where the tutoring sessions were already going on, implying that where we had brought students in, where we had done and followed our mitigation strategies, those top schools were all rated with the highest ratings for safety with from staff. So we believe this builds confidence if we can bring the students in. It does address equity concerns with students because we are bringing in students who are failing their classes, students who have been disconnected, unconnected and and struggling. We bring those students in first. It does address the possibility that if the municipality or some other entity were to reduce the fire code restrictions from 50% to some other lower number, the small classes that we're running through the this tutoring sessions would would accommodate for that. Fifth, it gradually phases it in to build confidence. And last of all, for the secondary groups, there's tremendous fears about us being able to run a summer school with the magnitude that we have right now. If we don't remediate these failures prior to the end of the third and the fourth quarter, we can't possibly do all this through a summer program. So with those six things, what I'd like to do is just quickly explain the chart real quick. So step zero is the gray area, which is basically online remote instruction, which we're doing right now. That's our default. The blue and pink areas represent small group tutoring and then that could start as early as January 18th. If we're able to finish up all the planning by the Christmas, which is our goal, and then staffs come back and have two weeks to identify students, communicate with parents, then those classes could begin as early as January 18th. The pink represents a slightly different small group instructional model for middle schools and high schools. Because of the way courses are designed and the way credits are earned, it's going to be much more imperative for the middle and high school to bring in the students that are failing, recreate master schedules for the third quarter and 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 the students that are successfully handling remote instruction now would stay in remote instruction. Now back to mentioning the blue areas again for the elementary, when they bring in those students in the mornings to do the tutoring, then the students would leave at the end of a two hour block. Teachers would get their preparation time and their lunches and then they would zoom for the afternoon sessions with all of their students. And so those students who are struggling would get a double dose of instruction during that time, some of it face to face and some of it through Zoom. Parents and students would receive this information directly from their schools regarding which students would come in for the extra support and they would receive the details about their schedules directly from the schools. And we could stay in this pattern of small group instruction for several weeks while we monitor COVID levels and mitigation strategies. And then we would move to step two and that's where the green starts showing up and this is where we start bringing everyone back. So hopefully, within a number of weeks after the small group is started, we could start with our little ones like we were going to do on November 16th, pre-K2 and our K6 self-contained special needs would be the first programs to return to a five and a half hour day with all students in those classes on site, in person class. The other grade levels for the, for a short period of time would stay in their small group tutoring classes in grades three through six and or their Zoom classes. Step three would begin to return grades three through six. So with a few weeks of that, then we would bring in our, the rest of our elementary kids and they would be the first grade span to be fully present. The middle school and high schools would remain in their current classes until the end of the third quarter. Those of you who know how master scheduling works knows what a challenge it is. And it has been a strong request from secondary that we make that break at a quarter break when new master schedules can be created and new courses created for the fourth quarter. So that is pretty much the the brief on how that plan would work. We're still working out a few details regarding transportation and lunch and we'll work through those issues remainder of the next week or so. The plan is to have everything completely done and all our planning by Christmas break. We'll come back in January and then right as we come back, hopefully we'll know enough about what, how things are going and the superintendent could perhaps make an announcement as early as the beginning of that week about whether or not school, small group classes would start on January 18th. So we believe this plan does meet those six goals that I shared with you and we believe it would build confidence in the plan, so that's my report.
Thank you, and part of that after break is the ability for student travel. We want to keep people safe, that if travel does occur, that that travel isolation time or away, those five days away occur and we do online learning, but that we're not bringing anyone back because we definitely don't have a way to know who has traveled and who hasn't. We don't have access to those data. So in order to ensure the safety of of people, part of that, those five days was an embedded plan in regard to travel in the state of, you know, traveling around the state of Alaska or out of Alaska. Lastly, I just wanted to share the continued work, I touched base on this a little bit. And I am highly impressed with the work of principals and their teachers in understanding the significance of getting children back. They are hearing from their families, families just super happy to get back, crying, giggling, excited about their children getting back into school, so we know it is a good thing. And our teachers are, if it occurs during the day, they are choosing to come back. They understand the mitigation and one of the things that Dr. Stock shared is that when we received the AEA survey, we did notice the schools that had the highest scores on confidence were the schools that already had students in them. That we will build confidence, we are confident in the plan. We are confident in our ability to provide the PPE and the other necessary mitigation, as well as the training. And it just, it's excellent data to have to understand that when kids come back, we operated safely and many of the teachers who were in those tutoring programs went in wanting to do this, did have some reservations, but the data that was collected by AEA really demonstrated the success. So we're going to continue site based, face to face tutoring options. Those for reading are incentive based and they occur after the general teaching, so it's a double dose. But there's many, many that are occurring during the day and we have 26 different face to face small group tutoring right now in our schools, 26 schools have children attending by their principals and teachers' efforts. By the end of fall semester, so over these next three weeks, 52 of our schools are having face to face. Our educators are seeing the importance of educating face to face and they're doing it and coming in and organizing around the PPE and the mitigation strategies. So we're only building confidence day by day of what ASD can do. And currently, again, they are volunteers for students as well as volunteers for staff. A student isn't forced to come back nor a staff at this point in time, it's not a requirement, if you will. And we are engaged in a public service announcement with our kids and and we went out to schools where teachers and kids are and wanted to know what they thought about face to face and this is our part to really focus on that memorandum 62, that it is about what we all do to prioritize children. Children are significantly impacted, more so than anyone else. They are, I think the term was used, they are carrying the weight of this on their backs because they're the ones suffering when it's the adults making choices. And here is a product that Alan and his team put together that we are going to begin sharing on social media and I'd like to share it with you. Very impressed and again, really appreciate the leadership in our buildings, it's been phenomenal. The leadership through Mark's group in really moving things forward as well as thank you to funding it and our custodial and maintenance groups who are supporting and doing everything they can drop of a hat to really ensure and service teachers and principals that are in schools and providing what they need, including our busing. So thank you to operations. Everyone is putting kids first to get this to happen and appreciate the board's support in doing that as well. Here we go.
So like, I really feel like I'm actually home.
In-person school makes it easier for kids to learn.
I just like the in-person attendance, it's it's more interactive.
Things like PPE require you to be in school.
The pandemic has affected everyone in this community and everyone has been impacted in different ways.
With schools closed, our students continue to bear more than their share of this pandemic's burden.
When schools are closed, we are not getting a well-rounded education that we need.
Every day our students are out of the classroom, they're missing out on essential skills and services.
Our schools offer unique services our students can't get anywhere else.
Our place is in the classroom.
We all want to get back into the classroom.
We are ready to welcome them back.
I want to come back.
Getting our students back into the classroom is going to require commitment from the entire community.
The sooner Anchorage can reduce the spread of COVID-19, the sooner we can be back in school.
We need your help.
Let's put education first.
Our students deserve it.
So I want to thank you. That's our product, and that concludes my superintendent report.
Thank you. Couple hands up in the queue. We will start with Board Member Hildy.
Thank you, and thank you for this work. I'll just jump in. So one thing that I keep, I've heard before, is the kids traveling over the break, and we're going to delay anything because they might need rest. The kids who have thousands of dollars to fly is going to be a smaller group of kids than the majority of our students, so I guess I just don't understand that reasoning. I will be flying with my kids over break, and they won't get to participate in things because we'll be following travel mandates, and that would be a choice we make. I don't think other children should have to suffer from my family's choice. So that's when I don't, I've heard from other people before, and I don't fully understand it, because you can just screen kids and say, "Did you travel over the break? You know, where's your test?" And so I don't quite understand that. And then just in reading this chart, I hear that middle school and high school aren't going to return until a quarter, so it sounds like there's no chance middle school or high school will have full, and maybe this is just logical, I don't know, I just want to be like clear, if we're saying for sure, no chance middle school and high school until fourth quarter, then I just want to make sure we clearly say that, so you know, people know, and we're not kind of being fuzzy about it. If some wonderful thing happened where our community said, "Let's stop spreading this virus, washing our hands and wearing masks," and our hospital rates went down, then maybe something different would happen. But if that is the case, I just want to be very clear with it, so people can plan and make choices. Sure. Those are great questions, and the travel is that we're doing online, and the expectations we continue to teach. It was one of the measures that when we heard from staff in regard to the fear of a lot of travel going on, and if we're, you know, want to get back in right away, are we going to just jump right in? And we wouldn't know, whether it's adults or students, that they traveled and increased the risk of exposure to others when we're trying to, you know, create a safe environment. So it was the unknown and ability to track with over 40,000 kids and teachers, how would we track who traveled and who didn't to ensure that there wouldn't be an increase? Because we know that travel and being with others, if folks aren't careful, if they go to other hotspots, I mean, that's why they say, "Try not to travel, stay home." You know, we don't want, it's the interaction of people, that that would increase the risk. And so to keep staffing strong, to finish strong, those five days at the beginning would be kind of get teachers, you know, back in school. We would continue to teach online as we are, but give enough time to allow that quarantine to occur, so that they feel confident that they're, when we receive children that, and other adults, that no, there isn't anyone, you know, not reporting or not doing what they needed to do and potentially putting others at increased risk. So that was the thought behind it. It may be unrealistic, or maybe the numbers wouldn't work out, but it was a very significant issue that came forward to the School Start Task Force by educators. And as far as the high school, it would be if there was a staged approach to move back in, access for small groups, but the full, you know, full move-in would be the fourth quarter, if we stayed in those staged approach. But those stages could be as quick as a week out, or they might be longer depending on the situation and the conditions.
Next up in the queue is Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think to figure out where we're going, it's important to figure out how we got to where we are. So my first question to the superintendent, if I may ask too, is in determining the minimum hours of instruction that were required, the minimum of one hour a day, four days a week, that we started the school year with, did the Anchorage Education Association oppose requirement of a minimum of more than that number of hours?
Thank you, Member Donley, and I am going to defer, if I can, to Dr. Stock, who worked directly with these groups on the School Start Task Force as the chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, through the president, to Member Donley. I wouldn't say that they were opposed to the numbers. The question that came out in all the discussions I had with AEA leadership was an awareness that this is a new, all of these things were new for lots of people in terms of the Canvas course shells, all of the work on creating all their own content inside those course shells, whereas, for example, ASD virtual programs have content provided to them in a canned format that they follow. The teachers at ASD and the Canvas course shells maintain the integrity of those course shells. So the concern from AEA was primarily that there was plenty, that there was, you know, adequate time for them to make those plans. And so, you know, there was dickering back and forth regarding to how much planning time do we need? And those are what we ended up settling on as appropriate, and I know the Teaching and Learning Department also participated in that, those who do all the curriculum work. And so, and I still think there's a lack of understanding among some regarding what constitutes instruction. Instruction is not merely a teacher talking on a Zoom call. Instruction is much broader than that with the technology tools that are available. And having taught myself at the doctorate level in online courses, I can tell you right now, creating online courses is far more work than a classroom face-to-face when you're creating everything from scratch. So that's what I would say as far as AEA, and they can speak for themselves as to how they feel about the expectations that were created.
Well, I don't think you, well, I think you sort of answered my question, but not really. Sounds like they didn't like the idea of having more than one hour a day for four days a week as the minimum. They didn't like it. That's what your answer is then.
Well, like I said, I'm not going to speak for them as to whether they like it or how much they like it.
Wait a second. You are our representative in negotiations with them. So I'm asking you, what position they put?
Member Hildy? Thank you. Board members are, you know, everybody gets a turn to ask their question, and we loop back around, and questions are directed to the president.
I just want a straight answer, Member Hildy. I've been waiting for a straight answer for months and months and months. And if we don't get a straight answer on this now, what's our chances of getting a straight answer in January?
All right. Thank you. Next up in the queue, Member Marseth.
Actually, I don't think I was next, but politics. So I am happy to see this plan. However, I want us to start back regardless. And, you know, I know that our numbers are high, I know that there's health workers that are in quarantine, but, you know, I'm looking at New York City, they closed all their schools, they closed their bars and restaurants, and then went back and heard the outcry and opened their schools back up. They made education a priority. I actually have the opportunity tomorrow, I hope, I'm waiting for an answer, the schools here in Arizona are all open, and I'm hoping to tour one of those schools tomorrow to see how they're doing and what they're facing. But I truly believe that we have to get our students back in school. I am very happy to see this plan, and I would hope, and I have the date in front of me, I think you said January 18th, that regardless, we get our kids back in school. I think there's enough evidence to show that we can do that. We're not forcing students to come back, we're not, as you said, at this time, we're not forcing teachers to come back. But this is a good plan, and I'd like to see us move forward, and I look forward to opening our doors on January 18th. My only regret is that we can't get our middle school and high school students in sooner, but maybe we can as we progress. Thank you, Dr. Bishop and your staff, for putting this plan together. You have my full support to do whatever we need to do to get our kids back into school. Thank you.
Next up in the queue is Member Bellamy.
Yes, I have a comment and then a question. So my first comment has to do with, I guess I have two comments and then one question. Thank you for the PSA, and hopefully, we can put that everywhere we can possibly get it, because I think reminding the community, if we were able to bring students back without any regard for emergency orders, they would be back already. But as part of the community, we have to demand, not demand, but really, really share this burden and hearing kids talk about what it's like to be back and needing to be back, and those staff who are courageously back, I think is wonderful. So thank you for that. My other comment has to do with the plan itself. I don't know that we can get any better than this. I really don't. We're not, again, as Member Marseth said, we're not forcing anybody to come back, but we are providing the opportunities for face-to-face and continued online, thereby increasing, it's not going to be perfect. And I think we all have to understand that it is not going to be perfect. So I see that as a good, the plan as not just doable, but I think people will be, a lot of people will be comfortable with it. And then my question, though, has to do with, earlier, I think you mentioned, Dr. Bishop, 26 schools that had small groups going already, and I've been kind of tracking some of those, but I haven't seen if any are middle schools and high schools. Can you share, are they all elementary, or are there any middle and high schools currently bringing back small groups?
Thank you, Vice President Bellamy. Through the president, Kirsten Johnson can name the, we do have a couple of secondary schools. Kirsten, are you available to share? I know South Anchorage High School is one of them.
Yep, I'm here. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Through the president, to Member Bellamy, it's a great question. So currently, we have multiple groups. I think our two largest groups are both groups at South and Mere Lake, it's a, or not South and Mere Lake, sorry, South and Golden, two opposite ends of the district, that doesn't work very well. Anyways, South and Goldenview have teamed up together, as well as Mere Lake and Chuyak. Those are our two largest groups, and we are really working hard with our ELL population at those four schools. They are meeting at the high schools, Chuyak and South, four days a week, and they're getting small group face-to-face, just assistance with their classes and just other academics, along with some other just social, emotional needs as well. So those are our two largest groups. There are groups going on at Whaley, there's a group at Hanchu as well. So there's pockets of small groups going on currently right now. Our plan for third quarter, when we look at this new plan that was just shared with you tonight, is that all of our schools starting third quarter in the secondary division will have small group work going on during the school day, as well as potentially after school as well. So it'll be a much more equitable offering starting in third quarter. Second quarter, we were getting things up and running and kind of greasing the wheels and getting our mitigation plans together, and we know what works and doesn't work now. So we'll have every secondary school with small group work going on during the third quarter.
And that would be a request of all teachers as well that are back, that it isn't a few kids here and there, that all teachers would be Zooming and working with small groups, depending on the need of students.
All right. Thank you.
All right, and I did have my hand up in the queue for a couple of questions. So both of mine are, I guess, maybe somewhat tied together, instructional in nature. As we're looking towards the second quarter and the opportunity for, you know, either pivoting or changing any directions, has there been any discussion on changing the quarter semester, the number, the model where we have right now, where it's, you're getting a whole semester inside of a quarter for three classes in one quarter versus the next one? Any conversation going back to the six classes?
Dr. Johnson, would you like to do that? May I request?
Yes, of course.
Dr. Johnson, would you please share the board president's question in regard to...
Sure. So President Vekilis, to answer your question, right now, we're continuing, we're planning to continue with a quarter model during second semester, where all of our secondary students have three courses per quarter, as opposed to six over the course of the entire semester. And most of that is because with this new plan, we are continuing in that online venue of delivery for a majority of our kids. So that, basically, essentially, if you remember to the fall when we were presenting plans, the reason we chose the quarter model was because in looking at online education and just the success rate for kids, six classes of online learning is just way too much for students a majority of the time, and kids are much more successful overall if they have two or three classes of online learning at a time. So since we're not returning face-to-face for all students until fourth quarter with this plan, the decision was made to keep with that quarter model.
Thank you. And then my last question was, any more discussion on the utilization of Wednesdays as a direct instruction day?
Yes, I believe, Mark, can you comment on that? I believe that Wednesdays are going to be...
Absolutely. Dr. Bishop, at the elementary level, there is a strong push, and there was communication with Mr. Barker and his teams today. I haven't gotten briefed on that meeting yet, but there is discussion among the elementary principals with regards to the use of the asynchronous days. And so I think there's a movement there at the elementary level that those days would go away and be replaced continuously by five days. At the secondary level, that's still a discussion point. At this point, I think I can let Dr. Johnson speak to that as far as how secondary is feeling. I know that there's a lot of content that has to be created, and so at that point, those asynchronous days, I'll let Dr. Johnson share that.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Stock. To President Vekilis, right now, we're still having discussions with our principals around this topic and along with many others within the administration at the school district, but our principals are really communicating to us, as well as our teachers. But at the secondary level, the course content creation online is very time-intensive, and teachers are working really hard. I hear stories all the time of, "This is the hardest I've ever worked in my teaching career. It feels like I'm a first-year teacher again." Those types of things. So they're really working hard to create these Canvas modules for students, and it does take time. So we are leaning towards trying to keep Wednesdays as an asynchronous learning day. Secondary students are more capable of doing their work independently on those days as well, and having it be productive time. So right now, that's the recommendation coming from principals and kind of the discussion that we're having at this point in time for second semester.
Member Mitchell, have you spoken yet?
Not on this.
Okay, you're up first, and then I'll go back to Member Donley.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you so much. That PSA is fantastic. It really supports what our draft resolution that we'll be discussing in communications and also memo 062 we're both getting at, which is, let's, you know, really communicate to the community that we need to all work together to get our kids back into school. So that's just fantastic. And the back-to-school plan that you have also looks really, really wonderful. I had a couple of questions going back to the earlier part of the superintendent's report when Ms. Petronas was speaking. First of all, when she put up the matrix, I had looked at it yesterday, and to see the negative 14% rate of change was so exciting, because if that stays in the negative range, then we will be able to get our numbers down community-wise, then we will be able to implement these plans safely. We'll have the staffing to do it, and the community spread will be much lower, and the risk will be lower. But in terms of where we're at right now, I think I heard either in the work session or during the superintendent's report that our nurses, I know our community health system is completely overwhelmed... that our nurses, I know our community health system is completely overwhelmed. And they're not able to really do much contact tracing. They're asking people to do their own contact tracing. Are our nurses in the schools helping out with contact tracing for things going on in the schools? And then also, if you can just maybe update us on the COVID testing, I believe their machines or the chemicals or whatever it is, how we're doing? Because I understand we're getting some capabilities within the district. So has that expanded? How is that doing? Because I know, you know, having the ability to test is also really important.
Through the Board President to Member Mitchell, as far as your first question goes, even though the hospital inpatient beds, there's some availability, it's really the individuals that do direct patient care, the nurses and the doctors, that are taxed in the hospital system. There's a lot of people that are calling in sick for quarantine, things that are happening outside of the hospital setting, as well as inside the hospital selling, setting in isolation and symptomatic. And as far as contact tracing, we have a small team that we're calling Contact Notification Team. And what we're doing is anybody that is a confirmed positive or close contact in ASD activities or in any ASD building, we're contacting them and letting them know when their release date is and when they can go back to normal activity. And if they're in school with a school nurse and not like in operations, for example, then the school nurse is talking to them about quarantine and isolation. So we're not doing a full contact tracing where we're getting their medical history and going over their family's medical history, but we're doing contact notification, notifying them that here's when you're released from isolation and quarantine and here's when you can return back to work. As far as the testing capability, we do have two Abbott ID Now machines, which are PCR rapid tests. We have one at Baxter Elementary and then we have one here at the Ed Center. We are doing people by appointment only, mostly symptomatic individuals that are doing anything in face-to-face learning involving students or staff. Anybody else, we're trying to refer them out to some of the local testing sites. We have a lot in Anchorage. We have really captured a lot of students who do not have transportation by just having simply just two Abbott ID Now test machines. And we're doing an average of 40 a day. So we've done a lot with that. We also have Visit Health is still going to at least two locations a week within ASD in the parking lot and doing walk-up sites. And in some cases, they're doing it three times a week. And we are continuing that through December. And if it continues to go well, we'll expand it into January.
Thank you. Jen, thank you. Madam President, I would like to do something a little bit different tonight. And it is a Superintendent Report and I would like to hear from our young people again who spoke eloquently. They are charging us with doing the best for them. And I would like to assist, if you could give me permission, I would like to hear from them briefly.
This is your Superintendent time, yes? Go ahead, Sarah.
We are in unique situations, so I believe there are some times for exceptions. But to the Board President, to Superintendent, I simply want you to be honest with us, be direct and look us in the eye as you announce you will not be providing us with an education this year. Because virtual school does not work and it is shown nationwide. There's no science to back up the claims of keeping us out of schools. We do not add to the spread. We do not add to the hospitalizations. You are only making us suffer. And this board and you can make that stop at any moment. So I ask that you provide us a second semester education for the 2020-2021 school year. Because I love this school district. I love my education. And I love the community we have built in Anchorage. So it is time for you to do your job to make us safe and first all, to have an education again. Thank you.
And Madam President, I would hope that in our Communications Committee, that you charge me to get these students back ASAP and maybe not have a stalled plan. Depending, I am, and our team at administration is willing and able, we have leaders that can do it. We need your support in backing us in the decisions that we know we can make and the mitigation that we know we can do. Thank you.
Next up in the queue, I have Member Donley.
Well, Madam Superintendent, you did have four votes on this board to be open on November 16. And I haven't heard that you don't have four votes open because you did have those at that point in time. I want to go back and understand the proposed plan better because I'm starting to feel like Charlie Brown with Linus pulling the football away every time you go to try to kick it. It's time to get these schools open and we need a plan that we can believe in and a plan that's not going to be pulled away from us at the last minute again. And so since our school calendar, that's been adopted as policy by this board, says school's supposed to, kids are supposed to come back from Christmas vacation on the 4th, to be in class on the 4th. Is all our staff, is the plan that you presented here to have all staff back in schools on the 4th? That's my first question.
I'm going to ask Dr. Stock. I know that the second semester, we do want our employees to work from their classrooms, to be in schools, to prepare themselves for the return of students. And I believe from the first week was all at home to ensure that when we do come back, that the time in quarantine is complete.
Yes, Doc.
And please correct me if I'm wrong. Dr. Stock, can you share the plan and the reasoning behind what you had presented?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bishop. So the idea is that we would bring the staff back in advance of the students returning in full sessions. And one of the reasons why there are not coming back onsite right off the bat is that we have major concerns about staffing between quarantine issues and the COVID rates that we're already running and travel and travel quarantine rates. There's great concern on the part of our administrators that we would not be able to staff everything, especially with the students piece, whereas we can do all the Zoom and the normal remote instruction that we're in right now, right after break. And that also covers us for the quarantine piece. So even if staff are quarantining, they would be able to do their work from home and not necessarily have to be onsite. So that's part of the reasoning.
Dr. Stock, you didn't answer the question. When are staff going to be required to be back in the classrooms?
The week before students return.
So now that's the 11th, you're saying?
Well, all the small groups and those instructional pieces, they would be returning then. If Dan, if Mr. Barker or Dr. Johnson would like to talk a little bit about those pieces, they may do that?
Well, I just want to clarify this. You keep talking about quarantine in relation to children or students coming back. But how is, it doesn't make any sense about the teachers coming back on the 4th if the students aren't in the classrooms. Why can't the teachers come back on the 4th?
If there are teachers who've traveled or teachers who are quarantining due to COVID rates, then the issue is, this takes care of that issue. If they're supposed to be at school and they're forced to be there, then they would take their leave. This is actually just, from our point of view, a common sense deal right after the break due to travel.
I don't think it's common sense. I think it's an accommodation that may be appropriate for the ones that have traveled or the ones that have some unique or particular medical condition. But to shut down the whole operation because some teachers may travel over the Christmas holidays does not seem appropriate or common sense. It's much better to get the vast majority of our employees back into the classroom to get this ball rolling for getting our kids back. And that's what our calendar says.
Instruction still is going on, Mr. Donley.
Oh, boy. I wish that was true. It's been a failure.
Okay, gentlemen. Next up is Member Marsette.
So I understand the reasoning behind starting the, and correct, I can't, I don't have the thing in front of me, but is it the 16th or the 18th? Or starting back up?
18th.
18th, thank you.
Martin Luther King Day.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I think listening to Mr. Stock and Dave Donley, I forgot my thought. So I guess here's the clarification maybe. If we open schools back up, are we still, are we still under the assumption that we will have teachers not show up and that we will still be short staff? And could that possibly contribute to the reason for those traveling and being, having that extra time to quarantine, knowing that we might have teachers that would not show up the first day of school? I mean, maybe I'm thinking differently.
That is correct. So we need teachers to be prepared for when students arrive. And part of that preparation is to work as a team and review and make sure they have those mitigation strategies down, especially in a large school, like when thousands of kids come back. So they're on quarantine, you know, they're on quarantine the first five days. They're teaching kids and students, or, you know, adults and students are both on online learning. The next week would be staff returning. The week prior to kids returning because of the additional training, they would continue to Zoom with their kids. But they'd also be engaged with their principals and others in preparing and doing the needed preparation for full-scale students coming back.
And then the other question I have is, I didn't realize it took a board vote for the Superintendent to reopen schools. I thought we gave you that permission and we have not rescinded that.
I do appreciate, through the President to Member Marsette, but I want to tell you, as your Superintendent, I have felt nothing, not very supported, nor the team. You don't, I have not seen board members ask me appropriate questions until recently about student learning and what's happening with students. In August, September, October, November, and I, you know, at this point in time, if I, if, you know, my vision's 2020. I mean, it's always 2020 in hindsight, right? But I want to say that the discussions and the pushback and the questions that you present time and time again demonstrate your thoughts. And so I appreciate, Member Marsette, when you said, get them back, I mean, that is when the tide turned for this board. Was your outward sharing of the importance of students in school and what it's doing when they're not? We are ready. We can do this. If the board stands up, we are ready and willing to get this rolling. On social media, our board, board members host social media sites that are killing us in administration. Let's say we want to get kids back and let's do it. I apologize for my inappropriate tone.
No, I have felt much of that frustration myself, Dr. Bishop. And I do believe wholeheartedly that you are right. And the, I mean, everything I look at, I'm sure you could present anything you want to say differently. But I believe that getting kids back into school is our first priority and it needs to happen. And as far as I'm concerned, Dr. Bishop, you have the authority to do that. I have not seen anything that's rescinded that authority, authority, nor have I seen anything that says that we have to take a vote for you to move forward with this. So regardless, a Memo 62 or a resolution, my thought as a board member is you have the authority to do what you think is best for our students. And you have my support. Thank you.
Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. Yeah. And, you know, passion is important because we are here for kids and it takes energy and it takes drive. And we all, you know, we all feel that at different times. So feelings are okay and we can process them. And so when we look at this back-to-school plan, I want to get to like what is possible. So we're here December 1st. I see blue group. That could happen today, like, right? But that's not going to be possible until January 18th. Is there a possibility to start one before the break or is that not going to happen before the break? And then is there a possibility that I don't see represented here for middle school and high school? Is there some community condition we're looking for? Is there some, something that would trigger being able to get middle school and high schoolers to that fourth thing sooner? Or are we saying maybe some of those pinks are going to be kind of a lot of kids? It could be a growing number of kids. I just want to clear a picture of what we can expect and what we can work toward and communicate.
Through the President to Member Hildy, I believe that I could present this back to Dr. Stock and Dr. Johnson and, you know, Mr. Barker and ask to accelerate what's happening after break. Another issue that we have is our ability as a large school district with huge operations to turn this before the break. Two things that are impeding this. We have just arranged and our busing is actually supporting kids getting to all these different programs. And so we have totally revamped the busing to support those principals who were innovative and supportive to get people back. So we created these busing times and systems, as well as continued to provide lunch for those that aren't coming back and food service. It is much easier for us after break, if we want to accelerate this, to have a plan to accelerate this because then the food service and busing would support those systems. I would say from the conversations I've had with Tom Roth that they're pulling off a pretty big feat to have 52 individualized program as a large school district that's traditionally operationally supporting mass travel, mass lunches, things like that. So we're creating these little, we're not efficiently operating, we're just doing what we can. And again, the reason that I okayed like sports and all these other things was to demonstrate, you guys, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this. And then we were delighted when AEA's survey, their own survey came back. And those employees in those buildings that did it were highly confident. And I know the rest of the employees will also be confident. They can do it. We have amazing, amazing people. So if it's acceleration that's needed, I can charge the team and say, let's get this accelerated. We need to get kids back. But I would find, and I would like Tom to correct me if I'm wrong, that turning, changing what we have planned for these next three weeks would be difficult because of the large-scale operations that he's done.
So through the President, to Dr. Bishop's comments, so I'll just say upfront, you know, we're prepared to support at the end of the day. And I have to commend Heather Philp and Andy Mergans and Darren Hargrave, Rob Hallman, that, you know, they're putting everybody out that can support the mission. But to Dr. Bishop's point, you know, we have routed our bus support to meet the needs of these smaller programs. Likewise, we have student nutrition staff that are spread out doing things that they would not typically do in the schools that they are currently supporting. So it would take some time to readjust those systems to support what we would consider to be a more standard school support mission. So to be sure, we're all in, but we would need some time to adjust. And it may be appropriate to give that at least two to three weeks to be ready.
And one more thing about the acceleration. One of the things that we did learn from those that have started did say to stagger it just because all resources are going to go to the areas to get it going. So I would say that we can accelerate the return. I would not have all students show up on one day because of what we've learned from best practices. I, I would not have all students show up on one day because of what we've learned from best practices in New York and others where they just staged in, but they did not spread it out over quarter. It was rather by weeks, sometimes a few days. And so, Dr. Stock, if we took this back, you know, can, can we turn this around, given the need for acceleration and, you know, hearing what we've heard to begin schools if we can staff them?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I would say somewhat, there are a couple of logistical hurdles that really have to be looked at. One of them is that every one of these students that are coming, excuse me, coming into small groups have to be identified, selected, communicated with the families. There has to be communication, they have to be asked.
Not accelerating with small groups, having school. The, the small groups are over time. I think the ask was, can we start school in classrooms and offer students and parents that want to stay home, stay home? Otherwise, courses can be in class. I think that was the question. Sorry.
Well, I'd rather not answer right now until I've talked with the team about all the, the project management that's, that we spent, you know, a month working on to talk to them about, see, to make sure there isn't something that we're missing.
That's fair enough, Dr. Stock.
Hesitant to answer that right now after all the work we put into figuring this out. Mr. Barker, I know there was something that, you know, you and I were texting there. There's something I think that you were going to add to this, if that's okay?
Absolutely, Dr. Stock. Through the chair, I would also offer, if we're considering something prior to the month of December, we, we built all of our tutoring plans as well as our phase in plans to address those percentage considerations in the muni ordinance. I don't know that we would be able to meet that with all students through the door in the month of December. I think only Whaley could maybe do that for capacity. That doesn't mean we couldn't do some other mid option there, but that would also have to be looked at for consideration.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, board member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. So I'm a little distressed because it's never, I don't think anybody on this board don't want kids back in school. I think that's a priority. I think the questions and the concerns had to do with factors that we just don't know about. And that's mostly around health and safety, not just for the kids, but for the family. So I guess my, for their families and, and while, you know, I'm concerned about that. So I will ask more questions about that. But it has never, ever been the intent to, to not get kids back. So I'm, I'm a little distressed that that is, that, 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 that was not communicated more clearly. So I guess, Dr. Bishop, my question is, is it your understanding that you can open schools or we, this board can open schools and override all of the emergency orders that might be given or are given currently in place by the muni?
Through the president to Vice President Bellamy. No, and in fact, we would follow those emergency orders. Presently, the emergency order for the latest one is in support of the 50% of fire code capacity. And we have assessed our schools. And at the elementary level where we were beginning, we absolutely can support that in spreading out. And I think Dan Barker's suggestion was that we have not done that yet for secondary, that we would have to assess those classroom space to be able to meet that ordinance. But all other specifics to those ordinances are being followed. In fact, our private schools are in session. Now, we made this plan around a possible change to 25%. If there was a 25% fire code capacity, we would have to reevaluate, but presently at 50%, we were very, very confident as we studied our plans. High schools are much larger, so the review of those are continuing to take place. But I would like it known that all emergency orders accordingly and specified for schools, ASD's plans for back to school are in line with those policies as, as presently stated in regard to our phase in of K1 and then the elementary schools.
Okay, thank you. So when you cancel prior returning, return plans or return plans, you did that based on, on, I'm just trying to understand why you did that. I mean, I think you did it because of communications beyond the board. But at, at least among some of those, among the decision, pieces of your decision. So.
That's a great question, through the president. The last cancellation of November 16th did, as Jen Patronas shared, and I did share with that, our ability to staff schools and the healthcare staffing was the first time that the medical community had cautioned us. However, prior to that time, I, I must share that what was happening at the board level and the pushback with staffing, we cannot do this without our teachers. And as you know, I, I believe, and we could go back and look at the testimony, that the type of testimony that came out today in support was lacking. And we, we didn't hear from families and students. We heard from our employees. And so we continued to work with the mitigation plans, with the safety plans, publishing them, basically working through, building that competency and confidence. And if you recall, the, the board did have a suggestion to override a superintendent decision to go back at one time. So. Prior to this time, it really has been trying to engender the support to get people back because we knew we could do it. And, and in hindsight, maybe we just should have pushed through and, and had all these discussions back in September. Because I, I do share that the pressure on myself and the team has been very similar in August as it is today. You know, in, in regard to internal and external in issues. And, and we know that our community is experiencing different, this differently. We need our staff to feel confident in, in their safety. And we've been working towards that and continue to do so with volunteers and then opening schools. And then now we're into, you know, volunteer programs. And frankly, our principals have been upset with me too, because they, they are ready, but for, for some reason, even when we went on, on the visits to the schools, those teachers that shared their classrooms in schools were, were ridiculed on social media for doing so. And so we really need to support each other and understand what we can and can't do. And my understanding from, from Dr. Stock and working with this team, that, that, that secondary is not worked out, but Dan Barker has more confidence in elementary because we're further along, that we can get going. And, and you know, I, what we talk about here is, is what we should be talking about all the time. And, and again, I, I wish it was happening in September so we could have moved through it. There are lots of places operating. And, and then we, we kept going back to, you know, for weeks, I was trying to explain the new matrix and why we did this. And, and, and again, I mean, member Marsette shared just the, the issue in New York, that they went with metrics and they had to undo that because they just don't make sense. We're learning so much about how we can be safe. And that's what we want to do. But we want our staff through all this too, to feel confident and safe. And that's what we're doing by starting these programs and, and getting them going and, and building that capacity. You know, ASD employees are amazing by and far. And, and they want to be back as well. And I, I know that we can do this. And those that cannot or feel that they have, you know, too high a risk, and we have those avenues for them to look into as, you know, their employer for best choices for them. So this isn't forcing anyone back. We, we, as adults, we, we come to this with our knowledge and our understanding of the mission and our work.
Okay, thank you. I, 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 this plan respects, I think, everybody involved. And I think we, if, if it can work and if the conditions in the, if we're meeting all the emergency order conditions, then I think, you know, we, we can't just not try it. So I, I, I just, I, I just think that these are very trying and emotional times. And we do need to stick together and, and try to support each other as much as we can, particularly our students and their families. So I don't have all the answers. I never have. I only have questions. But I, I would like to see, this plan looks real good to me. It feels good to me. So I will leave it there.
Next up in the queue is member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to dive into, well, first of all, everybody here, anybody's watched any board meetings since probably about last June knows I felt the matrix that was adopted that led to the closing in March was wrong. And then when the Department of Health and Social Services actually came out in the end of July and said it was wrong and should never have been used for schools, I was very glad to see the district move forward to adopt a much superior matrix, actually based on both CDC and World Health Organization standards. So at that point, we were already committed to virtual learning. And at that point, I spent a lot of time here, almost every meeting, talking about my concern about the hours of instructional content that was being provided to our children. I never have agreed that one hour, four days a week is sufficient for our kids. And I, I never thought it was appropriate to take Wednesdays off and to have the kids not have any direct instruction at that time. So I have been raising those issues consistently since this pandemic occurred. And I'm very concerned about how we ended up with the one hour minimum. And that's why I've been trying to get straight answers about how that occurred to prevent that kind of decision-making process, short-circuiting what needs to be done in January. I do believe the appropriate time to get our staff back into schools would be when school is scheduled by our calendar to start. And that would be January 4th. And then hopefully we could get our elementary students back in very soon after that, once the staff is back in and settled in the classrooms. Because the key to all this, I believe, is the kindergarten through second and third grade kiddos. It's just devastating what's happening to them. And it's, it's going to have impacts, long-ranging impacts upon their lives, I'm afraid. The discussion we had at the last meeting, where it was suggested that the closing of the schools in March was a success because it prevented spread of COVID is a, is, is a classic fallacy form of argument. It's actually has a formal Latin name. It's post hoc ergo prompter hoc. It means because something happened before something else happened, it was caused by the first event. There's no evidence whatsoever, and it's probably proven by the lack of effectiveness of closing down our schools to the spread that subsequently occurred in our community, that closing them down in March protected anyone from getting COVID. That we don't have any evidence that nobody, that there was a prevention there from that. But we have seen that keeping the schools closed all this time hasn't prevented. Now, I agree with a lot of the arguments here that the rest of the community needs to step up too and contribute. It can't just be a burden put on our students, especially our little ones, our smallest ones. This is such a crucial period of their lives where they learn how to read. It's going to impact them for the rest of their lives. We need to get our little guys back into the classrooms with their teachers, learning how to read. Learning that socialization is so crucial at that moment in their lives. That's why I'm so, my, my concern with this proposed plan tonight, it wasn't clear in the initial presentation, but under questioning that, that our, our teachers aren't even going to be back on the 4th. Under this plan, they don't come back till the 11th. And the students don't get back till Martin Luther King Day on the 18th. Is that actually the part of the plan to start on Martin Luther King holiday? I'm still confused about that because that's what the 18th is on my school calendar. And I, I guess it might be wrong, but I'm looking at it right here. We need to get the little guys back in the class. I think we should have done it on November 16th. And I think we would have proven that we could do it in a safe, responsible way and, and, and start to turn this ship around. And clearly, we're going to have to conform with the requirements that the mayor's executive emergency orders place on us. But we, but those don't prevent us from getting our teachers back into the classrooms on the 4th. And to prevent that from happening, because some may go on a vacation and some may legitimately have health concerns, which we have a system to acknowledge and to, uh, uh, deal with, just doesn't seem right to me. I think this plan is, it has got a fault there. Because we have seen what happens every time we do have a plan. It seems like outside forces intervene to keep it from happening. And I don't want to see that happen again. And I, I just really believe it's time to get our little guys back into the classroom to get the education they, they desperately need at this stage of their lives.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is member Hildy.
Thank you. So my goal is to understand this very well so that I can share it well and, and know exactly, you know, what I am sharing. So I'm hearing January 18th or 19th, whatever, 19th, January 19th, we're going to be for sure in one, because we could be doing one today. There, you know, even with our high numbers, we could be doing one today. So we will be doing this one group on January 19th. And then hoping that goes well, a week or two weeks perhaps later, we might be able to transition to two. And then we're going to be monitoring going forward. Maybe to get to three as quickly as possible, but just watching it. And then if, I, I, I don't want to be harsh about middle school or high school, I just want to be clear. I just, there's no chance for them to come back before fourth quarter. And if that's it, I just want to know because I have to go to the community and share it and I want people to be prepared, but also what to expect. And, and then for our board to adequately support a January 18th small group instruction for pre-K through 12. I mean, these are all small group instruction happening. Every school will have students on January 18th. So I want to be able to share that and be confident in my understanding of, you know, what, what we should be cheering for. Right as a board, we're going to advocate for our students.
Thank you. And member Hildy and through the president, I'll have the team comment on that. But certainly, you know, if we had already been prepared for pre, pre-K2 and the K6 self-contained, I just want to ask the question if when we move out of zero, can the one be green for those two? Could we accelerate that? You know, I should ask Dan or, or Dr. Stock.
Yeah, I would like Dan to take a, he's done the most planning with his elementary team. And I know that they were prepared on the November 16th date, but it does change a lot of the work that they've been planning with regards to the small group work they've been planning for. But I'll let Dan speak to how doable that would be.
So the question, Dan, is can we move pre-K and K6 self-contained to start in green on the 19th?
Through, through the president to the superintendent, not the way I usually get to say that, but.
They said the 18th before, but.
So, so.
That week is what we mean.
Right, right. When, when, when I, when in, in my divisional pieces, when we're planning, we refer to the weeks by the first day to acknowledge member Donley's point, that is a holiday. So the first instruction day would be the 19th in that conversation. But to your question, Dr. Bishop, elementary, as, as we've said, has plans ready, mitigation efforts in place and could go live with our.
That's what I was thinking, because we were already ready to go live. That's what I was thinking, because we were already ready to go live.
The only, the only concerns there we would have would have to do with where we ended up with staffing. And there's a real conversation with our HR department about what our sub-resources look like if, if, if we're not able to put folks in the buildings. But yes, absolutely, we could go whenever, whenever we needed to.
So at what point would we know if we're basically not doing?
We, we can, you know, this week, we can work, and hearing the feedback, we can have an accelerated movement, which I would like to see as well for pre-K 2 and K-6 self-contained with the readiness. Knowing that we may need to pull, we could start them either at one or two, depending on staffing. If we have the staffing and there aren't too many people out on quarantine, then we could staff a school and get kids in sooner.
Dr. Bishop, could, would it be okay if we had Dr. Johnson talk a little bit to the high school? Because the high school principals were very, I think, vocal with her group in terms of planning with regards to the way the quarters were set up. And I'd like her to talk a little bit about the challenges around the high school piece.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Stock. Through the president to the board, we, we are slightly behind elementary, but our, our principals have been working hard on mitigation plans as well for school start. We are currently doing walkthroughs at each of our sites with our principals right now to make sure that those plans are in place. So those plans and walkthroughs will be completed by the end of next week. So we will have mitigation plans ready at each of our larger secondary schools before the winter break commences later in December. So, so that's, I think that's an important factor for the board to, to understand. In terms of our, our challenges at secondary, lunchtime is a real challenge for us in our larger middle and high schools, just because of the sheer numbers. And, and that's why we've arranged a schedule with lunch at the end of the day, with a snack time in between, so that students still get to eat. However, we don't have those massive lunch hours that, that could be really problematic considering the way the virus spreads in, in our environment. So we, we've made some accommodations for that. There's also master scheduling challenges that come in at secondary, and those are really driven by our quarter system. You know, when you have, you know, 1,000 to 1,600 kids in a building, whether you're at middle or high school, you, you have a very intricate schedule that's developed. And, and once you develop that schedule, it's really hard to just flip, flip a switch and do something different because of the sheer numbers and the planning that's behind that. So those two factors are probably our biggest challenge at the secondary level. Our, our lunchtime, passing time is in there as well, along with, with master scheduling challenges. But our mitigation plans would be completed by the end of our time in December. And, and we could start to look at a more accelerated model, if, if that's the direction that we need to go.
And at, at this point, technically, one could be eliminated. Because if, if, according to staffing, if we didn't, if we had the staffing, we could move into two, because the third, middle, and high are identical. So what I'm hearing is that we could begin on two, if we could staff our buildings, and then move from there, and that could accelerate it somewhat, and then move forward. Again, our biggest hindrance, and again, in, in studying and talking with our neighbors in Matt's Sue, it wasn't necessarily, some of those school closures weren't really due to, like, COVID cases in the school. They were due to quarantining of staff members. They couldn't staff the schools. And they had come and, and they spoke to our principals and did a, a series and answered some questions. And their biggest, one of their biggest struggles was staffing schools. So we're, we're taking that very seriously and working through plans. Matt Teeford and his team, you know, have backup plans and other plans, and schools are training staff, generalists are, are supporting. We did hear that that is much easier to do with a generalist in education than it is for content area, area specialists in secondary. So there, there is an understanding why secondary would be more difficult due to that content specialist versus for a second, third. So, but Dr. Stock, we'll be charged with going back to school start task force and discussion of, you know, removing one, given that we could start with staffing. If we didn't have the staffing, I think one could be our Plan B if we couldn't staff every classroom, understanding case counts after Christmas. And quarantining of our own people, if they can't come because they're quarantined, because they were close contact, we, we can't meet safety requirements of supervision of children. Is that fair enough, Dr. Stock?
It is, Dr. Bishop. I think, I think the real issue here, the thing we need to, to make sure everybody understands is that the bulk of the detailed planning has been done. And it's been done and it's ready to go, whether it's PPE, whether it's all those other pieces we've been working on. Transportation does need, you know, or at least has requested at least two weeks of lead time on big changes with regards to the busing and transportation routing. Maybe they could condense that some, but they've told us they need two weeks when we can make these big changes. And I, I would concur that they know their business better than I do. So they, they've requested that. Food service, of course, if there's changes in things that require that, they've got ordering to do, and they've got other logistical pieces to arrange. So, but all the other pieces regarding mitigation and PPE, all of our, our things are in order. The, the supports for principals are there. So we will take it back and we will do a revised look at this, and we'll start on that at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And we will share with the board later this week and update on that and our plans.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Holloman.
Thank you. I do want to say, I think overall, ASD has done a good job in preparing, making plans, and getting ready. What changed for us is what happened in the community. And we could have talked more in September, but I don't think anybody expected what we're seeing in November. I think about three weeks ago, Dr. Zink noted that Alaska had to be ready for 500 cases a day. It's kind of a warning for how bad it could get. Well, it got that bad, and it got a lot worse. And things kept changing, and personally, I think the district superintendent has made the correct choices, just because of the potential impact on the community each time. It is a case, we can't go back and say, well, we did this, and then this happened, and so there must be a cause and effect. It is a case that Alaska in general, and Anchorage in particular, has been one of the top two or three places to be in the country in terms of safety. I don't think it happened for no reason, given the, the amount of international and, and national travel we have coming through here. Certainly, I, I don't think we should forget that steps we took along the way all contributed to the fact that we managed to push off for a long time high numbers of people becoming sick and spending time in the hospital. We're within a point now where we can kind of see just at the horizon the possibility of the vaccine, the possibility of improved treatments for people that get this. And, and I think we have to recognize this, this situation we're in right now is not forever. And it's important not to rush to a perceived solution that, that may cause us to have a lot of suffering for people in the community, not simply our students, and not simply our staff, but the community as a whole. When this district is in gear, it puts thousands of people in motion every single day. And it brings hundreds of people together every day. So unfortunately, that is how this virus travels and moves. There are places that have not seen a whole lot of student illness. There are places that have seen student illness matching what's in the communities. And, and it's hard to say what's moving and where it's moving. It does appear to be that, that classrooms with mitigation aren't the transfer points. But there's the buses, there's bus stops, there's just the interaction that the schools being in, in operation create. So I, I do think that our districts have done what was in the best interest of the community. Our kids are part of that community. And exactly who made the best decisions for the long run are something that we don't have an opportunity to do yet. But I do support being ready to start back at a reasonable time, but also just always being cognizant of what the risks are. Over and over and over again, I, I just want to say, this is all happening because of a virus. It's not whether people believe in it or not. It's not anybody's particular position on different things. It is an illness that has swept the world. We're trying to keep our city as safe as possible. And then further, we have continued education for everybody. It's working good for some people. It's not working so good for other people. But if we change plans rapidly, we introduce a certain level of chaos to staff members and to students. People are adapting to this, and they are doing a good job. And we need to be cognizant of that as we begin to make plans. And, and we can't necessarily, we, we have to give people notice as we begin to make these shifts. And I think when, when the superintendent has picked target dates and said, this is when we're going to do it, it was done in a way that respected that. Unfortunately, activities in the community derailed us, and we've had to step back. But I, I'll admit, I'm on the conservative side of it, in terms of being cautious, that the worst thing we could do is be an agent of the spread of this disease intentionally or unintentionally. It is why I support the small groups coming back. We've learned that way. We, when you limit the number of kids you're bringing in to a known quantity, you can plan and stay safe. But when you open the doors for everybody to come back in, those are the cases where you get rooms that are overloaded, or you get different things that become overloaded. And potentially, we've put kids at risk just from a lack of manpower in the immediate moment to, and the lack of space in the immediate moment. So I, I do think that, that what I've seen described by the superintendent has been smart, safe, and it has been moving in the direction of addressing the needs of kids that aren't being served well in the current situation. We should keep doing it. And, and I do think at some point, we have to look at the, the dates that vaccines are going to arrive in large numbers and try to plan on limiting the interaction of people until that begins to take hold. And, and I think fall is going to be a lot different than what we experienced this fall and what we're experiencing right now. But I do hope we'll skip to the long view of it and, and try to keep people healthy. We don't know the long-term implications of people getting sick, and that has caused us to be more cautious than maybe we had to be.
Thank you. I had one quick question, either for Dr. Stock or maybe Dr. Johnson. When we're looking at the matrix of colors and stuff like that, and the pink being the small group return to secondary, I know that the focus is maybe on some of the catch-up or the remedial or the ones that are kind of struggling the most. Is there a thought or possibility that that small group instruction could include groups like AP or gifted?
Go ahead, Dr. Johnson.
Thanks, Dr. Stock. To President Vekilis, so right now, what we're instructing principals to focus on is our struggling students. So our criteria is looking at kids who have failures in courses and need credit makeup or, or need courses at the middle level to do grade advancement. So, so that's our main focus. We're also focused on our special education and our ELL students as well, so that they get the interventions that they need as well. There, there isn't necessarily like an elimination of AP and, and some of those other groups that need some extra assistance as well. But right now, we're, we're focused on getting credits for kids and getting them passing as our small group focus.
I will think about that going forward. Thank you. Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. So I appreciate this discussion. I know it's, you know, it's challenging, but this is, this is good. This is what we need to be doing. So thank you, board members, for doing this. And so what I hear is that we have a plan for January 19th to either have K through, pre-K through two in, as many districts around the country are doing, or if there wasn't a, or staffing didn't support that, at least some would absolutely be in all of our schools on January 19th. My question is, or just like to highlight, you know, our community is entering into like this hunker down again. And it is, you know, I understand the reasoning for it. This is a sacrifice they're making. This is what we've been asking people to make sacrifice for children, and I want to make sure we capture the benefits of that sacrifice. So just as a board, that we acknowledge that right now, families, you know, people with jobs, I mean, people are struggling really badly right now. And whatever we do, I want to make sure we capture the benefit of that sacrifice. So our numbers should go down. Our hospitalization rates should go down. That's why we're doing these more restrictive things. So I'm a little concerned on January 19th, I guess, because it's such a, it, it's a long stretch of time between, you know, this period where we're said, we're really going to buckle down and really going to be cognizant. So I guess that's just a concern I have. But just regardless, that our board acknowledges the sacrifices our community is making, because we're asking them to do that, so they're doing it. That's good. But that we don't get kind of diminish the seriousness of what's happening, you know, the sacrifices that are happening. I don't know how to say that differently. Maybe somebody else does better. But that's just a concern I have.
And Board Member Bellamy.
I, I just had a simple question on staffing. How do we determine that, whether we have enough staffing except through sub requests?
Matt Teeford's online, and he can share some work from his department. Peggy Rankin is leading this work. I'm not sure if she's online. Thank you, Matt.
Yes, Member Bellamy through the president. I don't believe, Dr. Bishop, that Peggy is online, but you're right, she has been leading this effort. Member Bellamy, as you may recall, we began probably September, maybe even earlier, with a survey of subs who may be interested in teaching this year, understanding that we had a different environment. From that, we also developed some recruitment efforts to try to prop up that pool. Have met with some success there, and in fact, have, don't know the number off the top of my head, but many long-term subs in assignments currently. It is, though, the great unknown, and I think Dr. Stock and others have referenced that we won't fully understand the impact of staffing until, until that day when we do return face-to-face. Part of the, part of the analysis that we, as we've approached this, has acknowledged that unknown, as we've talked about various options for returning. And I'm speaking specifically now of the, the phased-in approach, and staffing concerns is a big, big part of that. As you also know, we have had access to personnel, for example, at elementary in specialist positions who've been able to pivot into coverages for classroom assignments and other assignments to cover to this point. But again, you know, until we have that, that moment when we return, when students return to in-person instruction, we, we won't know until that day who, who calls in sick or isn't available for whatever reason. I guess the final thing I mentioned is, we've, we've had discussion in board meetings and, and other venues about approaches that my division has made in providing additional opportunities for, or emphasizing opportunities for staff to access leave and other options if, in fact, they're not able to return to work. And in the interim, have, of course, relied heavily on telework assignments to ensure that, you know, staff who are comfortable coming into buildings can do those assignments from their classrooms, and others are in, in other alternate work locations. So it's been a variety of approaches, and we'll continue to do that as we phase in.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. You know, to echo Member Hildy's comments, I think, you know, this conversation is a good one. It's.
It's, it's important and we are getting into talking about kids and, you know, doing the right thing for them. Member Marsette?
Yes, just a quick question. I know when we were looking at opening up in November, that there was a strong movement or, I don't know if movement's the right word, but a large percentage of, or even a small percentage, I don't know, of teachers that just wouldn't show up that day in the classroom. What are our expectations if we were to move forward with this, well, I'm just going to say when we move forward with January 19th opening? What are our expectations in staff returning to the classroom?
Through the President, to a Member Marsette, I think it is kind of an unknown. We have information from AEA. They shared it with the board. I believe it was about a quarter of their staff said they wouldn't come back. Since then, Matt Tiefert and his department has offered additional opportunities to take leave without any kind of penalization during the school year because that is in statute that some repercussions could happen. So really shared that we would be open, we would work to find those placements and there was not a significant amount of staff that went that way, I don't believe. And Matt Tiefert's on now, he could talk about it. But again, until, we have been working through ADA accommodations that have made staff confident in one way or another in regard to masks and other things like that. But until that day, Matt Tiefert, can you really share until we open? We really don't know because staff has an ability, you know, if they are in quarantine, we would expect them to remain on quarantine and use that time. And so the spread of the virus would also determine that, you know, like where we are and what we're doing. And so there's so many unknowns, but Matt, do you want to kind of share?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Bishop, and through the President to Member Marsette. We have noted sort of an ebb and flow in those queries from staff as we've moved toward a planned opening date, upticks in terms of requests for leave or other accommodations as we approach those dates, and then we're now in a lull. So those are to be expected. Those options remain viable options for qualifying employees and we continue to message that through our leave office and through other HR departments. You know, it is, it is, as was mentioned earlier, a concern as we, you know, track what has occurred elsewhere in the state. As Dr. Bishop mentioned, we heard from administrators, Matt Su, who shared their experiences with respect to staffing shortages related to quarantine and close contact requirements more so than actual COVID illness. So we're prepared as best we can be to answer the call. Dan Barker and Kirsten Johnson in their divisions have put forward staffing plans with Peggy Rankin's assistance talent to sort of do a step-by-step approach for principals as they face situations on a given day in terms of what their options are to find substitutes and other options, whether it be other coverages options with specialists available, depending on the staffing levels in schools, whether it be, you know, some other certificated staff available in other locations who may be able to dispatch to a certain school to provide coverage and other, you know, other approaches, really an enumerated list to go down for a principal as he or she is facing a situation on a particular day. There, you know, we're also preparing in conjunction with academic services and operations for, you know, situations where the call has to be made that because of staffing shortages, a school may not be able to open for a particular day, but we're confident that's an outlier case given the exigencies that we've prepared for and the enumerated list of options that principals have as they face a particular shortage on a particular day.
Well, I'm sure board members can volunteer to be on hand that day if we need to be in a classroom.
We will add you to the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. Going back to that chart and I've got on my screen, but small group instruction, is there a number for that? Is it like five to seven kids or 10 to 12 kids or what does small group mean?
It's actually fluid depending on the need of students. Mr. Barker, would you want to share that? It actually could be four. We have some groups that are four, we have some groups that are eight going on right now. So it's a fluid number and it's based around need of service.
To the, to the President, through the President, I suppose, as Dr. Bishop said, we have some groups operating now that are less than the guidance I give in elementary principles when we talk about the January small group effort was to look at 10 per classroom would be what we'd be looking at. And that's a, again, there's a little play on either side, but that plus your instructional adults keep you well within all of our safety parameters.
Thank you. Member Bellamy?
Thank you. So as of now, we have 26 schools that have just kind of, they just decided with approval to offer small group, you know, classes, instruction, right, face-to-face instruction right now. In January, this would apply to, will all schools be providing smaller, you know, the 10, 10 students or elementary and whatever at high school? So I guess I'm trying to, what I'm trying to figure out is how much of this is going to be discretionary as of the 19th?
Dr. Johnson, can you share?
Sure. Through the President, to a Member Bellamy, at the secondary level, small groups will be required at all of our secondary schools. So we will have transportation, deliver them just like a school day and then take them home just like a school day and provide lunch and all of those good things that we normally do during the school day. We will be operating on a 50% capacity in each classroom. And while operations is helping us get the specific numbers for each classroom in each building, we're operating somewhere around the idea of 15 or less in our small groups. That's the number that we're kind of shooting for. Most of our classrooms, that would be about the 50% capacity in a majority of our secondary classrooms. So we're looking at 15 kids in a classroom for a full school day in small groups for their three classes for the day, and then they would have transportation and it'll be required.
And will that include alternative schools?
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, it is now 9:20 and I think we've gone through all of the board members as many times as they had liked to. I would like to take a five-minute comfort break before we jump in on the consent agenda. So if we could all take a quick pause and then come back and be ready to continue on through our agenda at 9:25, that would be wonderful. All right, board members, are you with me? Coming up on 9:25, thank you, Andy, I see you. Just a few more. There we go, Ms. Margot's with us. All right, well, we're going to go ahead and get going. It's 9:25 and next up on our agenda is the consent agenda. And Ms. Margot, if you would, please put forth a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes memorandum 059, which is the personnel report and the regular session minutes from September 22nd, 2020.
Katie, if you would please do a roll call.
Member Mitchell? Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy?
Yes.
President Vekelis?
Yes.
And the consent agenda passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up is our action items. We have no public testimony on the remaining action items. There may be some written public testimony posted out there. So next up is item number three, ASD memorandum 049. Member Bellamy?
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 049 and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development in the amount of $90,872 for McLaughlin Secondary Schools' school-based transition services.
Second.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions on ASD memorandum number 049? Not seeing any? Katie, if you could please do a roll call though.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Vekelis?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy?
Yes.
ASD memorandum number 049 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Up next?
I move to approve memorandum number 056 and authorize the superintendent to dispose of the listed surplus property by sealed bid sale, public auction, and other means as practical in accordance with Board Policy 3270, sale and disposal of books, equipment, and supplies, also personal property, and Administrative Regulation Number 3270, sale and disposal of books, equipment, and supplies.
Second.
Do any board members have any questions on ASD memorandum 056? Not seeing any? Katie, if you could please do a roll call though.
Vice President Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
President Vekelis?
Yes.
ASD memorandum 056 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up is our non-action items. Are there any items that board members wish to pull?
Yes.
And which item would that be?
Number two.
And are there any other items by board members? All right, Member Marsette, if you wanted to start the discussion on the COVID impacts to student nutrition?
And I'm not quite sure, I'll tell you what I want to discuss is having visited my schools, I find that compared to the summer when we were providing hundreds of meals, we're now down to providing maybe 10% of student meals. And part of that, my understanding, is the difficulty in families signing up online. I know that some schools have offered to help them get signed up, but that hasn't, it hasn't really impacted as many families as we would like to. And I think that's just been on a school-by-school basis. But I'm really concerned that there's probably students going without meals and it's due to the fact of the way, and I know why we have to have parents sign up now, but is there any way that we can make this easier? And then when we are, my understanding is, when we go back, if we go back to opening up schools fully, there's not a problem, but my understanding too is there won't be those meals at those schools for families to pick up if their kids are not attending school in person, that they would have to go to a distribution site, which would also keep many students from receiving food. So I guess I want some discussion on that, on possibly what we could do or what we can't do or, you know, what are we looking at?
So through the Board, President to a Member Marsette. First, I'm going to ask if Andy Murgens is online, I believe he is, if Andy could just kind of, kind of come up on the net. So I would say first that, you know, So, so I would say first that, you know, I, I think we share a common interest and desire that, that we are feeding as many kids as we, as we possibly can. And by way of some background, when, when we first went into this situation back in the end of March, you know, up, up to the present, student nutrition and partnering with student transportation, we're really kind of, kind of at the point of despair, serving, serving students across the district. And we were able to operate under some revised guidance from the USDA that allowed school districts to provide meals to, to anybody, quite frankly, that came to a distribution site and requested meals. And it could have been a student, it could have been a family member. We stacked meals for multiple days, and that was really kind of a, a high point, which Member Marset, I think you're referencing, this summer, we were, we were pushing thousands of meals, quite frankly, every day. Well, that, that permissive system came to an end on the 20th of August, when we were scheduled to return to in-school education. And the USDA modified the rules that required school districts to maintain accountability of meals provided to students, even though the district could provide free meals to everybody under, under the CARES Act. The USDA did mandate, unlike during the summer months, that we had to account for every meal. People, in order to do that, the district had a, has a system, it's called PayPAMs. And, and that's, that's a system that you're referencing whereby, in effect, families will, will preorder meals, student nutrition would provide those meals to students, but it required those students to come to school sites, or their families to come to school sites. So that's, that's a system that we are operating under now. I, I think I would just kind of offer this as, as some thoughts on the current situation. I believe, and I would submit that when we went into this, this summer, and spring into summer, there was a lot more uncertainty. I think there was a, probably a higher percentage of food instability or concerns about the food supply, job concerns. And because of the permissiveness that we were able to, to provide meals to, to families, we saw a lot more participation in, in the program. I don't know that those, those conditions still exist. We know that they do for some, to be sure. But for many, I believe a lot of that supply chain is, is caught up, that there is less food insecurity, that, that people are frankly working, not in all cases, but, but more so. So I think a lot of these factors are contributing to what is a, a reduction in the number of students that are coming to school buildings to receive meals. Now, as, as, I, I would offer that the way we really start to address this and increase our meal distribution, quite frankly, is getting kids back into buildings. When, when kids do show up, you know, we, we feed them, but when, when kids and families are not coming to either the schools that are serving or conducting the small, the small group instruction, we do have in our secondary schools, we have distribution sites, but again, it does, it does necessitate that folks would come to the school building. We have provided support to schools to sign or enroll our families into the PayPAM system. We're prepared to continue to do that. I, I think again, even though we don't like it, it's, it's difficult, we, we have no other system in order to make, make sure that we are complying with federal standards for accountability, so we, we can't just walk away from it. But, but again, we're happy to continue to work with our schools, with our families, to make sure that we are reaching out to every student who is eligible to receive a meal. And I apologize, it's probably been going on quite a bit, but, you know, again, we're happy to address any questions that you might have about that.
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your comments, but I guess I have to differ a little bit on, you know, we're going into the holidays, I've heard that the food bank is short on food. We're going into a lockdown, which means a lot of people are not going to be working. So I think more now than maybe like in the summer, there could be more families looking for meals for their students. And I just want to, and I know you guys are working on this, but I just, I'd like to, you know, us continue to work and make this as easy as we can, given the restrictions that we have and being able to get them signed up, especially during these, right before the holidays and such with, I know there's going to be a lot of people out of work for the month of December, and so it always worries me that our, that our kids will go hungry. So I do appreciate if you guys would take a look at this, see, you know, if there's not more we can do about getting families signed up so that they don't go hungry. I think probably part of it, and there's not anything we can do about that, but I know some families don't like to sign up for things because if they're immigrants and they don't want any public notice, or they don't want, you know, that's what keeps a lot of them from signing up for reduced lunches anyway. But I, I understand our restrictions, I understand we have to work with this, but I do appreciate if you guys could take a look at this and see how we could reach more of our families that I know are in need.
So through, through the board president to the member Marset, thank, thank you for that and for, for your genuine advocacy for, for our kids. I would just close by saying we would never turn a kid away.
I know you wouldn't. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Did any, any, did any other board members have any questions regarding the student nutrition portion of the non-action item? All right, not seeing any, we will go ahead and move on in our agenda. Don't have any additional public testimony. That brings us to the school board and administration comments. Do any board members have any final thoughts to share for the evening? Member Bellamy?
Yes, just an announcement really, that today I saw a press release for CARES Act vouchers from the Muni for families and for individuals. And I think it's www.muni, I'll look it up, and I'll have to look it up because I can't remember. But basically, it's CARES funding, there's a million bucks in CARES funding that will be distributed by application process for, for their, for vouchers for families. And so for our families who may be in need of, and it's gift cards, it's not cash, they're not transferable, but families, families can apply for a certain amount, I don't know what that is, and individuals can also apply, but the, the lowest amount is $200. So I, I just think that that might be a godsend for some of our families. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Bishop just shared that we do have that posted on our ASD website as well.
Awesome.
Member Marset?
Yes, I just want to say that, you know, I, I really hope I'm able to get into this elementary school, I left a message yesterday, or today, because I, you know, and just come back and share with the board what I'm seeing where schools are actually in session and sharing some of the things they're experiencing and just being able to view the schools and maybe bring back some insight to, to our school board and district with this visit. So looking forward to that, and I'll be flying back into Anchorage tomorrow night, so looking forward to the snow, uh-huh, and I'll be in quarantine for a little bit. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to remind our community, anybody that's still listening, that we have a very packed week next week and as we go into our holiday. But next Monday at 5 o'clock, we're doing it in the evening, is our joint school board and assembly meeting that is open to the public. On Tuesday, we have our governance committee meeting at 3:30 and communications at 4:30. And on Wednesday, the 9th, is our community town hall for our strategic planning goals and guardrails. Then, of course, our next regular meeting is December 15th. And, you know, between now and then, and always, we always welcome our community involvement and input, you know, into everything that we are doing. And so want to thank all school board members for participating tonight, all the administration, the community for, for sure. Just thank you to everybody, and we look forward to continuing the conversation. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Are you doing the school board comment part? We still are, did you?
No, I don't have to, I just, I'll do the motion to adjourn.
Oh, I have no other, there's no other countries.
Move to adjourn.
Okay. I adjourn, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Night.